Hello, I'm Mayor Drew Combs and welcome to the February 25th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually at any council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. In chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, City Council members Jeff Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. City Council member Cecilia Taylor is participating remotely under Assembly Bill 2449 Just Cause. Councilmember Taylor, were you going to provide a description of your circumstances?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. I am participating under AB 2449 Just Cause because I am not feeling well and there is no one under 18 in the room with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. In accordance with Government Code 54953B.2.A and the City Council Procedures Manual, when one or more City Council members participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order using legal first name with the mayor voting last. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Norah Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Haren. City Clerk Haren, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. And again echoing a welcome to our regular February 25th City Council meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda. After the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature and if you're calling in, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Haren. The next agenda item is closed session, but before we go into closed session, we'll take public comment on this item. City Clerk Haren, do you want to call for public comment on the closed session item?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on agenda item C1: Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, if you're in person, you can complete a speaker card, return that to me. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in, pressing star nine now. Final call for public comment on our closed session item C1. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Haren. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. The City Council is expected to adjourn from closed session or reconvene from closed session at 6:30 PM.
All right, having our city council back at our virtual and in-person days. Mayor Combs may reconvene the meeting.
Right, thank you, Clerk Heron. Reconvene the meeting? Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or information items?
Mayor Combs?
Yeah, Councilmember Taylor.
Yes, I'd like to pull item M six, the homeless information item to hear it after the appointments for commission if possible and before we discuss the regular business item on the ordinance. Thank you.
So I'm going to turn to the city manager to see if they are, because right now it's an informational item. Is there staff present to provide information on M six? Other than what is actually in the staff report?
Let's see, Mayor. So there are aspects that I believe that we've attempted to incorporate into the presentation. So I guess I would kind of question whether the city council member Taylor has had a chance to look at that presentation slide, because if it's additional beyond that, then we could see what we could do in terms of rearranging that. But if some of the information incorporated into the presentation would be sufficient?
And to be clear, you're referring to the presentation for the oversized vehicle ordinance, that item, where you feel that some of the information from M six has been incorporated?
Yes.
That works well for me, Mayor Combs. And City Manager Murphy, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other requests to modify the order of the agenda? Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, this is general public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. City Clerk Heron, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, you haven't already in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me here at the clerk's desk. You're participating virtually, now's the time to engage that hand feature. Calling in from a landlady or a cellphone, please press star nine now. Okay, currently seeing four speakers, so this is the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, so we have a total of four speakers, and our first speaker will be Joaquin Jimenez, followed by Ann Ausler.
Hello. Good evening, mayor council members, city staff, members of the public. My name is Joaquin Jimenez, and I'm here to speak about Measure A. Measure A is a violation of constitutional rights to vote. So Christina Corpus, Sheriff Corpus, was elected by the people. Only the people can remove her from the position. It can be a recall, but even the grand jury can remove her from the position. Not the county supervisors. I'm not giving my power, all my vote, to the county supervisors to remove Christina Corpus. She is a leader in our community. She's not being questioned over being a leader in the community or her position. She's being questioned on her personal life. If we were to investigate for a sheriff's department, or county supervisors, we would have slim pickings about who is going to be our governor or government representing our community. I'm not willing to give my power to the county supervisors to remove a person, an elected official that was elected by the people. If you remember 2020 during the election, 2020, 2022 election over Carlos Bolaños, Christina Corpus was a favorite, because she is bringing a new way of policing in our community. She is against bringing taser guns and pepper sprays into our jails. She's bringing better services, better programs for the deputies' mental health. In Hafum Bay, she has been part of the Fourth of July parade. She has been present during Pride Day. She has been there for the children or the farm workers gifts during Christmas. She's been in our community, like she's been in other communities. I'm voting no on Measure A, because that will take the power away from us. That's a little taste of what a dictatorship would be. When you lose your power to vote, to elect the people that you want to be represented by. And to me, Christina Corpus is a person that I want to be the sheriff. Please consider your vote, March 4th. Besides spending millions of dollars by our county on this special election, it is a violation of our constitution. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ann Ausler, followed by Pete Colby.
Hello. My name is Ann, and I'm a relatively recent resident of Menlo Park, District Three. I'm here to support the proposed housing project on parking lots one, two, and three. I get around Menlo Park primarily by foot, by scooter, and by bike. I commute to and from work at our Caltrain station. I leave Menlo Park by car. If I have to get in a car to go to the hardware store, I'm not going to Ace, I'm going to Home Depot. If I have to get in my car to go to a restaurant, I'm not going downtown. I'm going to Redwood City or Mountain View. Downtown's with parking structures and mid-rise housing that have been revitalized through projects like this. I challenge you to think about the benefits having more people close to and supporting our downtowns will bring. More people who can walk to our businesses, more people who will stop off for a coffee on their way to the grocery store, more people who will notice a restaurant and come back with their families tonight. The best time to act on affordable housing was five years ago, but the second best time is now. We have turned against project after project that would make Menlo Park more livable, and yet again, we are facing a choice in this. We find ourselves pushing back, claiming that parking lots are more important to us than making sure we have a thriving community where our neighbors, our teachers, our firefighters, our businesses' employees are able to live. When this project comes before city council, again, I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Pete Colby, followed by Adrian Silva.
Good evening, council. I just put my card in tonight because I read in the paper yesterday that they were going to be discussing the closing or the possible elimination of the barricades on Santa Cruz Avenue. They published that yesterday, said it would be in the meeting tonight, so that's why I decided to put a card in. But I wanted to thank the city for all the work that was done for the tree boulevards through town during the storms we had and all the rain and the flooding. I looked at it as I walked by, and I would have, I would have felt really sorry if I couldn't have helped somehow to get the gutters cleaned out and all the storm drains full of those leaves and those those seed things coming off of the London plane trees on the El Camino. Anyway, there's a lot of work going on in the city. There's a lot of nice replacement of water meters and paving. I think it's largely the California Water Service, but I'm sure the city's spending a lot of time and money to keep the city in good shape, and it's really, it's really a joy to have a country, you know, a place to walk around. But I'll save my comments when I hear there's a discussion of the barricades. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker will be Adrian Silva.
Good evening, city council and neighbors. My name is Adrian. I'm a downtown dad that supports density and diversity in Menlo Park. First of all, I want to thank you for voting to move the downtown housing project forward last month. I know that you're hearing a lot from other residents that feel passionately about this proposal. I'm here to speak on behalf of my future neighbors who are not able to attend city council meetings on weekday evenings because they are still at work, are commuting, or enjoying dinner at home with their families. I will keep repeating this point, as will others, because we all know that for every person that comes up to the podium to tell us about how they lived here for 30 years, there are 10 people who could only dream of becoming a member of our community, but they are unable to do so because of the high cost of rent and homeownership. We all feel passionately about this issue because we care about the future of our city. The surface parking lots as they stand are an inefficient use of public land. Every time I walk by one of those lots, my eyes are drawn upward as I imagine future housing. Those lots can be more than just parking. City staff should work on creating this vision to help all of our community members visualize and imagine a better future. Members of the city council, please maintain your resolve in moving this project forward. Many people have suggested that using the Civic Center or Burgess Park for this housing proposal would be an alternate option. This is not realistic. The housing proposal, this housing proposal does not make financial sense at the Civic Center. I'll explain to you why. Whether the housing is built in the downtown lots or at Burgess, we can all agree that a multi-level parking garage will need to be built to accommodate existing and future parking needs. The construction of parking garages is expensive and will require strategies to recoup some of those costs. This would mean parking permits for different types of users. The sale of these permits will generate funds for the construction, maintenance, and operation of the garages. The concept of paid parking makes sense in a commercial district. Charging for parking in a bustling environment downtown is not an untested concept. Thus, a parking garage makes the most financial sense downtown. Paid parking will be a hard sell to people coming to enjoy our parks. Whether it's for storytime hour at the library, a basketball tournament, or a city council meeting, our Civic Center also has parking needs that cannot be ignored. Mayor Combs, councilmembers Nash, Schmidt, Taylor, and Wise, please make the right decision for future Menlo Park residents. Do not continue to uphold the status quo. Past decisions by policymakers have artificially constricted the housing supply in our city. Past decisions made in these chambers have put us in our current predicament. Only through your leadership can we adapt and change to create a better Menlo Park, not just for me and you, but for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
And that was our final hand. Seeing no other cards or hands. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Heron, and thank you to all of the public speakers. We have one presentation this evening, item E one, San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority update. Here to introduce the item is Executive Director, the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority's Executive Director, Margaret Bruce.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and hello to the members of the community. And I get to vanity slides. Okay, so some of you are new faces, some of you are familiar faces, some of you maybe have heard this before, but I think it's a good time to come to you with an update. So the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999, 2000, after the flood of record in 1998. That flood was the highest recorded flow in the San Francisco Creek in recorded history. Recorded history doesn't go back all that far. In the distant past, there may have been higher flows, and we'll get to that in a bit. When the JPA was formed, there were five organizations that came together. When the, the JPA was formed, there were five organizations that came together that have skin in the game. On the south side, there's the city of Palo Alto and the Santa Clara Valley Water District. On the north side, it was San Mateo County and the cities of East Palo Alto and Menlo Park. Since then, San Mateo County's jurisdiction has transitioned to One Shoreline, which is the official title is the San Mateo County Flooding and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. They make up the fifth member. It's a small organization. You're looking at one quarter of the entire workforce at the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, but we are very, very fortunate to have a legion of very good consultants supporting our project work. So with that background, there we go. So many folks may not be aware of the context in which we do our work. And I don't know why I've got a little square there, but it doesn't cover up too much. The San Francisco Creek watershed is an interesting hourglass shape. The tributaries in the hills to our west gather about 90% of the water that comes through the San Francisco Creek. Once it comes down into the urban area, it's already carrying all the water it's going to bring to us. Because of the interesting shape of its alluvial fan, that's the triangle, that brown triangle in the upper right of that slide. Those tributaries combine roughly at about where 280 crosses the landscape. Those tributaries cross highly erosible rocks and other materials in the upper watershed and bring it downhill. If you've ever driven down Sand Hill Road, you notice that it goes at a rather alarming steep angle. You kind of notice it's not on flat ground. It goes downhill. It's following the terrain of this alluvial fan, which is the millennia of deposited sediments, rocks, stones, and gravel that have come down from the hills. What that means for our creek is that it's sort of an upside down landscape. Most people think of a creek as being in the bottom of a valley. Our creek is at the top of a hill that it has built. So when the creek overflows, it flows out and down across the landscape, which is a challenge for flood risk reduction because in our enthusiasm, prosperity, and optimism, we've built our urban landscape right up to the edges of the creek, right up to the creek banks. In the historic past, the creek would have wandered across its alluvial fan. It had room to spread out and drop its sediment and drop its water and move to the bay. But we've confined it to one narrow channel. So our project. Go, oh, too far. Our project is to address that blue area, the red area we'll, we'll, we'll talk about in a moment, but that blue area is a diagram of in a really big flow, a really big flood, where the water would tend to go across the landscape. It flows away from the creek and downhill. And as you can see, it's a really long way away from the creek itself. So people who live miles from the creek are at risk of flooding and may not even know it. So what we have gotten done so far, the Reach One or the Downstream Project, which is the segment of the creek from Highway 101 out to the edge of the bay, used to be a really narrow channel. It was a manmade channel. It wasn't a natural channel and it was very small. It was too restricted. It backed water up into the urban area, didn't have room to flow. Now there is enough capacity in the one and a half miles of widened channel to convey at least 9,000 cubic feet per second capacity, which is very big. It's enough for a hundred-year storm plus three and a half feet of sea level rise, plus extra space for a margin of safety. 22 acres of salt marsh has been restored and it protects the communities of East Palo Alto and the commercial area of Palo Alto from flooding up to a hundred-year storm. That was the keystone. That was the first part that we needed to accomplish before we move, sorry, to our next project. The Reach Two project moves upstream, kind of like pulling a zipper up. Now that we have this big open capacity in Reach One, we can begin working on expanding the capacity in the urban reach. That's the part from Highway 101 to Pope Chaucer Bridge. So there was this thing that happened on New Year's Eve a couple of years ago, caught us by surprise. We learned that unfortunately, our creek channel has 25% less capacity than we thought it did. And it wasn't that the original models were wrong, they just didn't have enough detail, enough information, enough historical record to give us this level of detail. Now that we've experienced this and we know more, we have gone back to the drawing board to make sure that we can design a project and implement a project that still provides protection up to that flood of record, what's considered a 70-year storm level of protection. The San Francisco Creek Board in May will be meeting to include, um, meeting to review what is going to be proposed, a suite of different project alternatives, a mix and match of different kinds of activities. Channel widening, top-of-bank treatments, bridge modifications, bridge replacements. By June, the board will make a decision about which alternative they prefer. And then the members, the five members can start to have a heart-to-heart about how the project will complete its funding. So once that funding and project alternative is sewn up, um, optimistically, we can begin construction in 2026. That is optimistic. So also importantly, Menlo Park is also vulnerable to flooding, flooding along the shoreline, as is East Palo Alto. This image on this slide shows the projected tidal flooding under, I think, a three-foot sea level rise scenario. So this could be a hundred-year storm plus a king tide or three feet of sea level rise. This is a visual that gives you an idea of how much of our community's shorelines are vulnerable to high water from the bay. It also shows some vulnerabilities to some critical infrastructure, including Highway 84 and the bridge approach, the Facebook campus, excuse me, Meta Campus, the PG&E substation. There are three other, there are two other power substations. There's, uh, you know, an amazing number of critical and complex factors in this project. So the Safer Bay Project that deals with this shoreline is seven and a half miles of shoreline protection. The goal is to use as much nature-based protection, so things like what are called ecotone levees or salt marsh restoration areas that allow those, the salt marsh to be a buffer against tides and wind and waves, as well as FEMA accredited, accreditable levees to protect the communities against the same level of protection as the Reach One project. A hundred-year storm plus three and a half feet of sea level rise so that those areas can be removed from the FEMA floodplain. And that project is, uh, going through its SEQA analysis. We have published a draft project description, so that's available for the public to review. We will open up public comment in the fall. The EIR will be complete and ready for review and our plan is to have the, the, uh, the, the JPA Board certify the EIR at the end of 2025. Menlo Park and East Palo Alto both have grants that enable them to begin implementation. I think you have an action item on your agenda this evening that relates to that. So we are deeply engaged with our community-based organizations and, um, are excited to see this moving along. We have recently received an additional amount of grant funding from the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. So now that $6 million is closer to $10 million and that will enable us to do some more of the critical work in the habitat restoration areas south of Highway 84 and in the restoration areas in Ponds R1 and R2 north of 84. And we also do storm and flood, flood warning coordination. There is a five-member organization called the Multi-Agency Coordinating Committee. The JPA monitors rainfall and stream gauges and act as a subject matter expert amongst our member agencies. And we provide communications and outreach and coordination during storm events. And that's wrapping it up. Happy to answer any questions or provide more detail.
Thank you, Executive Director Bruce. And Ms. Bruce didn't share that I am actually the representative, to be clear, for Menlo Park to the, the San Francisco Creek JPA. Are there any questions from council for Ms. Bruce? Okay, then I'll, I'll, uh, let the city clerk call for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our presentation I1, San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority Update, you are in person completing a speaker card at the back table, returning to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, if you're calling in, pressing star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our presentation item I1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right. Thank you. Um, any comments on Mrs. Bruce? So, well, I'll, we won't let you get away that easy. So, so, uh, a question, you mentioned that the genesis of the JPA, uh, you know, stems from the flood of record and along the creek in 1998. And then around the 1999, 2000 period, these five, uh, entities came together and formed the JPA. You, you've had one really significant project, but if I'm doing my math, that's 26 years. What do you say to the public? That, um, comment that that's a long time to essentially still be in the position of flooding risks that we were in in 1998?
So two things, we're not in the same position that we were in 1998 because the Reach One project is complete. But to your point, it has been a long slog. My, I've been with the organization now four years. It is my understanding that in the first five or so years of the organization's history, there were member conversations about how to proceed and there was a decision to go with the Army Corps of Engineers in what's called a general investigation, which is, I want to think about like the Encyclopedia Britannica of projects. Because this is a watershed, there is no way you can take one little piece and say, we can fix this, but we don't need to think about anything else. There was a recognition at the time or a thought at the time that the best way to address this was through an immense project that was from the bay all the way up to Stanford Lands. That general investigation study was ambitious, but underfunded and over a series of federal administrations had surges and ebbs of funding, leaving the project stalled, unfinished, backtracking. And at some point, round about, I think, 2015 or so, after about a decade of this engagement with the Army Corps, the JPA members came together and said, this isn't working. We're not making progress. We cannot push Congress to pay more attention to this than they have been. We can do it ourselves. So to their credit, the leadership of the JPA members at the time said, we're going to self-fund the Reach One project. And with the Santa Clara Valley Water District, San Mateo County, and the three city members, and some significant grant funding, we're able to fund, design, fund, and build that project in about four years. So that was an accomplishment and that's part of why it took so long. It is, to say that these projects are complicated and fraught would be an understatement. Every time you learn something new, like there was a flood and there's 25% less capacity in the channel, you need to go back and do a re, rebase line. I, I think, I, I, I think you would all find it unconscionable if we went forward and said, yeah, we knew that there was less capacity in the channel, but we're going to use our old design anyway. Never mind. We had to do our due diligence to make sure that we could still deliver our promise to the community to protect to the flood of record. So it just takes a while. It is not a good look to say it's taken 26 years, but here we are.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Thank, thank you. I didn't have a question, but I think you, you may be, um, Drew, the mayor opened a bit of a can of worms. I'm, I'm just curious, so one of my favorite soapboxes now seems to be the shakiness of federal funding and reliance on grants. And in hearing what you said and in looking at this and, um, all that, I'd just be curious how the JPA is looking at the funding environment over the next four years and will that create significant delays? Are there alternatives? I, I'm just, yeah, I feel like that's not going to be a reliable source of funds, so I'm curious for your thoughts.
The percentage of federal funding for this is zero. We have funding, in theory, from the Measure S Safe Clean Water and Natural Flood Protection, property assessment that is assessed in the county of Santa Clara. We have a small, similar sort of benefit assessment district next to the creek here in San Mateo County. The balance is going to need to be found amongst the other members, the members to divide up, so Menlo Park, Palo Alto, East Palo Alto, One Shoreline are going to need to come together and have a, an honest conversation, a creative conversation about how to fund proportional costs to proportional benefits. That will happen starting in June when we have the board's decision on, so, so what, what is the objective? What is exactly the project and what are the costs? How long will it take to do this and how much will it cost over how many years? I share your discomfort with the reliability of federal funding. There's no sense that there will be any requests for federal funding for this project. We do have some state grants. We may be able to go for additional state grants with Prop 4. We will be investigating those options.
That does remind me though, Safer Bay is different. And so is that money in the bank or from the federal government or that is yet, it get this, it's dispersed, um, in waves? How actually does that work?
Because the city of Menlo Park and not the JPA is administering and leading on the FEMA BRIC grant, I would defer to your staff to answer that particular question. The money that the JPA has to do the SEQA part of the Safer Bay Project, which is both project level and programmatic for the seven and a half miles, we have that funding from one regional agency, the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, which receives its funding through the Measure AA Regionwide Tax Parcel Tax Assessment. And we have a grant through the State Department of Water Resources. So again, no federal funding for, for the JPA's part. Menlo Park has a FEMA, a federal BRIC grant. Again, I would defer to your staff for their perhaps closer inside knowledge about how FEMA is approaching that.
Okay. Any additional question? Right, well, thank you very much for the presentation.
My pleasure.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item J Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. Can, J1, Consider Applicants and Make Appointments to Fill Vacancies on Environmental Quality and Library Commissions. Here to introduce the item is Deputy Clerk Sarah Sandoval.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Member, Staff, and Members of the Public, both in chambers and online. I'm Sarah Sandoval, your Deputy City Clerk. Uh, thank you, City Clerk Karen, for letting me commandeer the clerk's desk for this item. City Council for this item, staff recommends that you consider applicants and make appointments to fill an unexpired vacancy on the EQC and an unexpired vacancy on the library. to fill an unexpired vacancy on the EQC and an unexpired vacancy on the library commission. For a brief recap, in November of 2024, City Council Members Schmidt and Wise were elected to the City Council and subsequently sworn in at the City Council Reorganization Meeting on December 10, 2024. I'm sure you remember, thus vacating their respective seats on the Environmental Quality and Library Commissions. The City Clerk's Office then ran a special recruitment for these vacancies from December 23, 2024 through February 14, 2025, culminating in 19 applications received from 17 total applicants. The task now at hand is to appoint two applicants, one to the EQC, one to the LC. The process is set forth in City Council Policy CC-24-004, which is Attachment A on your staff report, is for the City Clerk to ask City Council Members for their nominations, with the number of nominations being limited to the number of vacancies. In this case, it's one, one per. And the candidate that receives the majority of nominations will then be appointed. If no candidate receives a majority, and that's a majority of three out of five City Council Members, we will continue to ask for nominations until a majority is achieved. We will take nominations verbally by roll call, using legal first name with the mayor going last, or if it is the preference of the City Council, we can collect nominations by an alternate method that the City Council directs. And finally, I would like to add that though we can only appoint two applicants tonight, annual recruitment is now open for all Menlo Park advisory bodies, and the City Clerk's Office is actively seeking applications for the Complete Streets, Environmental Quality, Finance and Audit, Housing, Library, Parks and Recreation, and Planning Commissions. Any applicants who are not appointed tonight are encouraged to resubmit the application they have on file by emailing the City Clerk, or to submit a new application by Wednesday, April 9. And while I have the microphone, I'd like to invite any residents over the age of 18 who are joining us this evening in chambers or online to learn more or apply at menlopark.gov/commissions. And that concludes my introduction. I'm turning it back to you, Mayor Combs.
All right, thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval. Are there any clarifying questions for staff on these items? Okay, with that, then, Deputy Clerk Sandoval, you can call for public comment on this item. And just to be clear, like for those folks who are applicants, you can make public comment here if you would like. There is no requirement?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Combs. For anyone in chambers who would like to make public comment on item J1, please fill out a speaker card and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are online, please use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen, or if you are calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, Mayor Combs, we have, let's see, seven speakers? We'll go ahead and do three minutes each?
Yes.
Okay, great. So our first speaker will be Daniel Yule.
Hello, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Daniel Yule, and I recently moved to Menlo Park, and I'm interested in becoming more involved in the community. So when I saw the request for applications for the library commission, I thought it was perfect. I've served on several advisory boards before, from a community theater group to student societies. I've helped organize academic conferences, and I found them to be universally challenging, engaging, rewarding, and most of all, fun. So I was excited to have an opportunity to do that. But specifically, the library commission interested me. And this is because libraries have been an important part of my life since I was born. My grandma, my mom, and me all worked in libraries in our life. I started as a page, putting away books, then I was a circulation clerk, checking books out for people, and finally, I was a reader's advisor, sitting behind the desk, answering reference questions, and helping people find just that one book that they really wanted. I used to have a fun party trick where someone could give me a three-digit number, and I'd tell them what Dewey Decimal Code that corresponded to, which tells you something about the kinds of parties that I went to. And what I found when I worked at the library was that it was a magical place. It was a place where anybody could come in and find anything they wanted to find, and there'd be something there for them. There were people who just needed a warm place to be. There were people who were researching case law. There were people who were just looking for a really good read, and they all found what they were looking for at the public library. It's my belief that a library is the hub of the community. It provides incredible value, and it should be accessible to everybody. So if you nominate me tonight, you will nominate somebody who is passionate about libraries, you will nominate somebody who is excited to make sure that they are accessible to everybody, and you'll nominate somebody for whom libraries are an incredible part of their life. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Desta Rains.
Good evening, Councilmember Wise, Vice Mayor Nash, Mayor Combs, Councilmember Schmidt, and Councilmember Taylor. I'm standing here tonight, first and foremost, as a resident of District Three, an active member of the community, and somebody who's lived here and rented here for eight years. Secondarily, I happen to be an expert in sustainability. My day job is at Sephora, where I manage operational sustainability across our distribution centers, our stores, and our offices. So I have the expertise to join the Environmental Quality Commission, but I also want you to think about me as an active member of the community and somebody who can contribute a lot to what we have to offer here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Sarah Sisbot.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Sisbot. I live in Menlo Park, and I applied for the library commission. The Menlo Park Library is my favorite place outside of Disneyland to spend time with my two boys, who are four and eight. We love the summer reading challenge, the poetry competition, and library adventure, to name just a few activities. I would love to help support this institution, which has given my family and me so much. I have experience working at a library. During and after graduate school, I worked at Stanford's library, where I focused on cereals, especially those from Eastern Europe. I also have many years of experience working with teams as a project manager, most recently at Stanford's Alpha Clinic. Most of my recent volunteer roles involve serving through listening, including as a volunteer buddy with Bay Area cancer connections, and also as a volunteer chaplain at Stanford's hospital. My kids and I have many ideas for the library, including having a library registration drive for young children. Getting a library card is a big deal, and it would be wonderful to celebrate that, while also increasing community awareness about the amazing programs that are being offered by our library. Also, we would love to have merchandise like tote bags and hoodies that say, I love the Menlo Park Library for sale. So I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I'm truly honored to be among this group of very talented applicants. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Bridget Bradford.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, Councilwoman Wise, Councilmember Schmidt, and Councilmember Taylor. My name is Bridget Bradford. I live in West Menlo Park, which I recently learned, I think, is District Five. I'm here tonight because I'm very interested in joining the Environmental Quality Commission. I have a back, sorry, I have a background in consulting tech companies on sustainability and environmental measures. I have worked with organizations to develop and implement measurable sustainability initiatives, including ESG standards. I have helped advance large-scale nature restoration projects and carbon credit markets, giving me firsthand experience in analyzing and establishing impactful climate solutions. Menlo Park has been a part of my family's story for generations. My deep ties to this community make me invested in ensuring its future remains sustainable and resilient. I am passionate about environmental issues because they directly impact the health, safety, and quality of our community. In 2022 and 2024, I worked for federal campaigns, and while that work is really important, it made me realize that a lot of the issues that I, that matter most to me, that I want to have an impact on, are decided at the local level. The work this commission does helps shape the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the neighborhoods that we want to build. A strong environmental foundation makes Menlo Park a better place to live, work, and raise a family. I would be honored to serve on this commission and work alongside the council, city staff, and the community to help Menlo Park achieve its ambitious environmental goals. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Doreen J. Martinez.
So, good evening, I'm Doreen, and I applied for the Environmental Quality Commission, and I came because I thought I should introduce myself both to the council and to fellow residents, why I applied, and what I think I can contribute. So I'm an active parent in, at Lower Elementary, where my daughter is in second grade. I'm a huge outdoor enthusiast, and I am a sustainable trade finance practitioner. I applied to the EQC because I think that there is nothing more important than sustainability. I think it's the greatest challenge of our time, and I feel a responsibility to my daughter's generation and the generations that follow. But I also applied because I spend a good chunk of my day-to-day consulting corporate clients on how to align their ESG goals with bank financing and other institutions and other bank groups on, you know, what are best practices in my specific industry. And so I thought, you know, I'm doing this at work, and shouldn't I be doing this where I live and in my community and in my city? And wouldn't it be fun to apply these principles locally? And so that was really the impetus for applying. And in terms of what I think I can bring, it's really two buckets. I think one is innovation and global best practices. I'm a Bay Area native, but I've spent most of my life outside of the Bay Area and other countries and in other cities, and I would like to bring that knowledge to Menlo Park and to the council. The other area, I think, is community engagement and partnerships, because implementing new policies, trying out different practices, really revolve, really necessitates partnerships. And I work in finance now, but my background was in, I've worked in government, I've worked in nonprofits, my formal training is in public policy and education, and I think I'm well positioned to help bridge sort of communication amongst stakeholders. And, you know, sustainability does not impact, we don't all relate to it the same way, and it's not a priority for everyone. And I think that, you know, we've got to really make our job as residents, as the commission and as council, is really to create and craft messaging that makes sustainability practices and principles and policies relevant to residents. And I think that's what I'd like to work on, and I think that's what I can contribute. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Nicole Angiel.
Hello. Hi, Mayor Combs and councilmembers. I'm Nicole Angiel, and I'm so excited about the potential to join the Environmental Quality Commission. I've lived in Menlo Park for 12 years. This is my second time applying for a position on the EQC. Since I last applied, I've become even more interested and even more prepared to take on this role through my work at ACTERA, a local climate action nonprofit, and the launching of my own business, Carbon Cutout. I've spent my whole career educating, advising, and empowering others to protect the health of our planet and everyone on it, and that's evident in my application, but I wanted to share a few words about my core values. I approach everything with integrity and a holistic view. I recognize how one small change has a ripple effect across the whole system, and it has impacts near and far, now and in the future, and lower-income people in our community are often impacted the most. We can fix what's broken, we can do it the right way, so we don't have to go back and clean up more messes, and we can lift everyone up and support those who've unjustly been left out of the equation. I'm also someone who fully understands and respects local government. I get the process, I get the players, and early in my career, I worked as staff for the city of San Francisco and later in West Contra Costa County. I met with city council on a regular basis and proposed new solutions for impactful, equitable, and innovative new programs to reduce waste. And I get that local government work is complex, and it takes time. And I know how hard your job is, and I want to express my deep gratitude for your commitment, and I want to thank you for all you do to make our city safe, just, and sustainable. I'm Nicole Angiel, and I would love to be your partner on the EQC. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Margaret Race.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and City Council Members. I'm here today with an interest in becoming appointed as a board member of the library. I have a lifetime of libraries like most other people do. Growing up in Boston and, you know, going out and visiting the library, it was a good way to get away from home and also ride my bicycle and stop by the candy store on the way home. But it went beyond that. I went to, after Boston, Philadelphia, Oakland, Lafayette, and I spent 10 years on the Lafayette Library and Learning Foundation Board during a time when we just were building the library and also then establishing it and reaching out and developing new programs for the community. I'm recently retired from almost 40 years of working with both UC Berkeley and Stanford University as a faculty member. My PhD is in biology and environmental sciences, and what I'm really interested in is showing students the career paths that they can develop through their, what they love. I was a competitive swimmer and liked to be a jock and go out and learn things, and that made a great career path for me. My PhD in marine biology and environmental management and coastal zone restoration, actually, some of the marshes in San Francisco Bay. So I like cross-disciplinary research and the ability to work with people and show them that learning is a lifelong thing, and libraries are so much a part of that. I've worked with EPA, Public Broadcast System, the Mass Media Foundation, AAAS, NSF, and most recently with NASA, looking at how do you do communications about challenges, like what if we discover extraterrestrial intelligence? What if we discover microbes and want to bring them here? So it means thinking about funding and grants to bring information to the community, not just about the library, but about everything they face and the challenges that are ahead, because we end up saying, how does it affect our community? How does it affect your career path? How does it affect your education? And recently, I've been working with a community college, Evergreen Valley Community College in San Jose, which is an underserved community, and we have started to make plans to bring an inflatable planetarium to the schools, to the libraries, to the OSHA lifelong learning programs, and have people really experience something that they never could. It's not just taking a book off the shelf, it's sitting there and learning all about these things that are happening all around us. So I would love to be a part of the library community again, and be, I would be happy to fill the spot that has been left vacant. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Andreas Judas. Andreas, you should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council Members and City Staff. My name is Andreas Judas. I'm calling in today to express my strong interest in the vacancy on the library commission. I feel that our libraries are a hub for community engagement and that they provide equitable access to city programs, providing not only the services that everybody knows libraries for, things like books and after-school homework programs, but also things that people don't think about all the time, like pickleball paddles and parks passes, among others. I think that my 20-plus years in the tech sector as a project and program manager, where I worked with where I worked with many different groups and had to understand and consider the needs of different stakeholders, can help me to contribute to the commission. I think it's a very exciting time for our libraries with potential projects coming up, and I'm excited to become more involved with the civic engagement of Menlo Park. I'm a longtime resident of Menlo Park. Our kids went through Menlo Park Public Schools and the library systems, obviously. And I would be very excited to become a member of the Library Advisory Commission. Thank you for considering my application.
Thank you for your comment. This will be our final call for public comment on item J1. Seeing no further hands, Mayor Combs, I'm turning it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval. And just, and I'm sure you explained this, and I just missed it, but I want to make sure I understand that for someone to be appointed to the commission, they need a plurality of votes, or do they need a majority of the votes available?
They need three of our five.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thanks.
Of course.
Thank you, everyone, for the public comments. I have to say, in my 13 years, I've never seen so many applicants for so few positions. And it definitely makes me feel, I'm humbled, it makes me feel inadequate to be on city council reviewing all of the resumes. And I know the vice mayor has heard the story a number of times, so I will, but I'm going to say it again. She has to hear it a lot, but 13 years ago, I was new to Menlo Park and thought like, and saw, and added in the paper for the bike commission. I was like, oh, this is, like, this seems fun. I'll go apply to the bike commission and like, you know, because who really wants to be on the bike commission? And so I applied, and I dressed up and came to council to see myself not get appointed to the bike commission. And so I just want to say, for those who are not appointed, that please stay involved and stay engaged and apply again. I think I applied, obviously, I applied again. Not that you, your goal needs to be being on council, but I think, what, 80% of our council has been on city commissions. And so it's a great service to our community, a great introduction to government engagement at the local level. I also want to make sure I point out specifically for these two commissions that for the EQC, for those who are not appointed, I would encourage you to look at getting involved with Menlo Spark, which is a local organization that advocates and has devoted itself to some of the same priorities that you see for the EQC. And then for those who are interested in the library commission, there's also Friends of the Menlo Park Library, and I would encourage you to get involved in that if you haven't already for those interested in the library commission. Okay. With that, are there any comments from my colleagues? If, no, please, Vice Mayor?
Just one other thought is, I know many of you have already attended the commission meetings that you're interested in and other meetings, but please do be an active participant in the commission meetings, even if, you know, obviously, we don't have enough seats for all of the wonderful applicants that we have here today. Please do still participate. Commissions encourage extra people participating, because it is just seven people per commission. And we love all the enthusiasm and the incredible depth of experience and knowledge of all the applicants. Thank you.
Just to add a couple quick comments. This, I have to say, coming up through the Environmental Quality Commission, just an excellent group to consider for both commissions. But to see the professionals who work in this space, to show an interest in the city work, I just want to say I'm extremely appreciative of that, because some of these issues around climate can end up being pretty complex and multi-jurisdictional and things like that. And then just to build on what the mayor said, there are a number of organizations like Menlo Spark, like 350 Bay Area. You know, talked to John McKenna about getting involved in the activism, because on the climate side, it is a pretty tightly knit group of people who are very involved in the community. And things like the Love Earth Festival are coming up. So if you're not appointed this time, please do get involved, because it's a way to just get to understand the community who are actively working. And all the commissioners are kind of activists and commissioners jointly. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of amplify what the other council members are saying. Thanks.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. My only question is, are we starting off with library or EQC for a nomination?
I think we're gonna, since in the staff report, it has the EQC first. I was gonna start there. And I'm happy for the deputy clerk to start the appointment process, unless you had some other question? Or were you prompting us to get along with the appointment process?
Through the mayor, our default is alphabetical. Unless you direct otherwise, we would have started with, or we plan to start with, the EQC.
Yeah, right, okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. And are we ready to proceed with nominations? Okay. And one last confirmation, we're okay with roll call by legal first name with the mayor going last? That's okay with everyone? I'm seeing nods. Okay. For Environmental Quality Commission, we have our applicants listed on the screen. I'll go ahead and start with city councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I am happy to nominate Eduardo Lopez Hernandez.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Nash?
Eduardo Lopez Hernandez.
And city councilmember Schmidt?
Desta Rains.
And city councilmember Wise?
Nicole Angel.
And lastly, Mayor Combs.
I'll go with Nicole Angel.
Okay. So these are the results of our first vote. We've got two for Nicole Angel, two for Eduardo Lopez Hernandez, and one for Desta Rains. As I mentioned in our intro, and per the policy, we're going to reset and start again. Just one moment.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. We've heard from many very, very talented people tonight, and we have many applicants. I think that it is very important to have representation from District One, and that is why I will be continuing to hold to Eduardo Lopez Hernandez. I very much, Lopez Hernandez, I very much appreciate the, everyone who has applied and wish we had 10 more seats on the commission.
Okay, we're ready to proceed with another round of nominations. Starting with, I'm sorry, Mayor Combs, was there something we wanted? Okay. Starting with city councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. And just as a reminder, we do have another recruitment, starting on April 9th. And I am happy to nominate once again Eduardo Lopez Hernandez.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Eduardo Lopez Hernandez.
City councilmember Schmidt?
Eduardo Lopez Hernandez.
City councilmember Wise?
Nicole Angel.
And Mayor Combs?
Nicole Angel.
Okay. So we have reached a majority with three nominations for Eduardo Lopez Hernandez, thus appointing him to the unexpired term of the Environmental Quality Commission ending April 30th, 2026. Congratulations to Eduardo, and I'll set up our nomination sheet for library commission, if you'll just give me one moment. Okay. We are now looking at our nomination sheet for our library commission vacancy. We'll go ahead and begin with city councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I am happy to nominate Daniel Yul.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nash?
Sarah Sispot.
City councilmember Schmidt?
Sarah Sispot.
City councilmember Wise?
Daniel Yul.
And Mayor Combs?
Andreas Judas.
Okay. Once again, we're displaying results. We've got one for Andreas Judas, two for Sarah Sispot, and two for Daniel Yul. I'll go ahead and reset. We'll need that vote of three majority to confirm an appointment. Okay, we are reset. And once more, city councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I am happy to nominate once again Daniel Yul.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Sarah Sispot.
City councilmember Schmidt?
Sarah Sispot.
City councilmember Wise?
Daniel Yul.
And Mayor Combs?
The weight of being mayor. Sarah Sispot.
Okay. Thank you all. We have three nominations for Sarah Sispot, thus appointing Sarah to serve in our unexpired term and the library commission ending April 30th, 2027. Congratulations, Sarah. And with that, the city clerk's office will be connecting with our appointees. Thank you for your time, and thank you for making appointments.
Yeah, I don't know. This isn't part of the order of the meeting, but you can, I don't know what the whole we started off at the full list, and then we restricted it to just those folks who had received nominations. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City clerk Karen, we have, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, K1, city council meeting minutes. K2, a resolution authorizing a reimbursement agreement with Safer Bay. Or K3, an agreement with Safer Bay for design of project. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engaging that hand feature bottom of your screen, calling in, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, K1 through K2. All right, and I have one card, Pete Colby, on item K2.
Can you hear me? I just wanted to bring up the point of information about the presentation by the Joint Powers, the head of the Organization for the Creeks Management. And that is that after the 1998 flood, there was the Army Corps of Engineers involved, I think, but they had an issue about the downstream effects of any improvements to the problems they were having when it overflowed to Greer and out into Palo Alto. And right away, there was auxiliary tunnels bored across Middlefield Road on the creek on both sides. If you're ever down in the creek, I go down there with the Bay Area Action, they call it ACTARA now, but we clear the creek out of shopping carts, rugs, and all sorts of things once, twice a year. You'll see that there's extra tunnels around the main channel that are up off the bed with gates on them, so that they're only pushed open by water. But they did an improvement on that, and that was sort of contested. They didn't want to talk about it, because if it were to happen again, they'd get even worse effects in East Palo Alto, because at that point, it came over into East Palo Alto as well, as it went down Greer. And people in Palo Alto were going to sue, you know, that people in Palo Alto were damaged. So I just want you to know with a fact that there are extra tunnels bored on both sides of the main channel that goes under Middlefield. If you want to look, I'm pretty darn sure I saw with my own eyes.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our cards and hands. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. I'm bringing it back to the dais. Is there additional comment or motion? Vice Mayor Nash?
I'll move the consent calendar.
We have a first to move the consent. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. I'll second.
All right. Clerk Karen, we have a first and a second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by city councilmember Taylor to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
City councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
City councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Karen. With that, we'll move on to the regular business of the section of the meeting. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is L1, introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 11 of the municipal code to revise sections related to stopping parking and standing for vehicles and establish parking restrictions for oversized vehicles. Here to introduce the item is Police Commander Tony Dixon.
Mayor, I present item L1, which are ordinance amendments related to parking. It's our recommendation that we waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to address changes to enhance the city's ability to enforce certain parking regulations and add enforcement capability in reference to oversized vehicle parking. An overview of the proposed changes and additions. Our key objectives are to enhance safety, clarify regulations, and address the community's needs with regard to some of the parking ordinances within our municipal code. Some of the Title 11 changes, there's going to be three particular ones that I'm going to discuss this evening. In 11.24.050, there's going to be some slight changes to the existing overnight parking program to make it flexible for new residential developments and allows OMP to include overnight parking regulation of city facility-related parking lots. In section 11.24.070, there's going to be some slight language changes to make it more in alignment with other local city regulations regarding vehicles that are parked for 72 hours or more. And section 11.24.075 is a new regulation that addresses the adverse impacts of oversized vehicles parked on city streets by prohibiting the parking of oversized vehicles from the hours of 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM on all city streets. The ordinance text itself defines oversized vehicles, establishes exemptions, which are pretty basic with regard to identifying deliveries, short-term preparation of individual residences, preparing their own RVs, governmental operations, and certain exemptions for city-issued residential permits. It also establishes penalties for the unlawful parking of oversized vehicles on city streets between the hours of 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM to include citation and removal of those vehicles. The education and enforcement process The education and enforcement process, um, of this new ordinance is similar in some aspects to our existing overnight parking ordinance. Uh, one of the things that's different, though, is we would be placing, uh, signs on, in target areas, uh, adjacent to the roadway that explains what the ordinance is and what the potential, uh, penalties are. Um, and then additionally, like I said, in addition to, uh, I know everybody's familiar with our standard overnight parking courtesy notices. I know when I was a resident, I got plenty of these. Annually, we give notices to those vehicles that are parked between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM that explains what, um, the ordinance is and what the potential penalties are. And then in addition, once those vehicles have gotten a courtesy notice, they're subject to citation next. Um, it was brought up earlier, specifically one of the areas in town that were, um, dealing with oversized vehicles right now specifically. Um, there's been questions about what we've done as far as with regard to homeless services in Menlo Park. Um, we've collaborated significantly with, um, a lot of social service agencies. It's something that we've done consistently in Menlo Park. I know, um, in my time, uh, when I was assigned to patrol and then, um, as a patrol officer, as both as a supervisor, then my current role as an administrator, we've done significant work in working with the homeless population. We still do that today. And with this specific area that we've also been working with, WeHope or Life Moves, um, Street Life Ministries, and trying to provide different sets of, uh, people and facing different circumstances, um, different types of services that may help them, um, get where they need to go. Some of our recent successes, um, we've provided housing placement for, uh, individuals in certain areas of other encampments within the city. And one of the ones that are police department-specific that we're particularly proud of is we've launched our Community Wellness in Crisis Response Team. That's our in-house clinician that provides a co-response with our police officers, um, specifically dealing with those in mental health crisis. We've had fantastic success with that. So all of these things are a work in progress of things that we continue to do and continue to enhance in dealing with our members, uh, of the community that are homeless or facing mental health crisis. And going back to, um, the parking regulations that I brought forth, uh, to you tonight, our recommendation is that you waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance to address changes to the, enhance the city's ability to enforce certain parking regulations and add enforcement capability in reference to oversized vehicle parking.
All right, thank you, Commander Dixon. Um, are there any clarifying questions for the commander? Okay, um, Clerk Karen, do you want to call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our regular business item L1, introduce and waive a first reading of an ordinance related to stopping parking and standing vehicles and establish parking restrictions on oversized vehicles. If you have not already, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in, please press star nine now. We're currently at 14 speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L1. All right, uh, Mayor Combs, we currently have 17 speakers.
Thank you, Clerk Karen. Our standard protocol is that when there are more than 10 speakers tonight, and we limit public comment to two minutes. And so I will follow that protocol in this instance, and as a result, we will limit public, uh, comment time to two minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Our first speaker will be Peter Benzoff, followed by Tito Bianchi.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Peter Benzoff. I'm a small business owner here in Menlo Park. We have a property at 4055 Bohannon Drive. You're going to hear a lot of different opinions this evening. Uh, I really appreciate the service of our police department as well as yourselves. I've met with all of you about this subject matter. We had 100 petitions signed in favor of this parking ordinance. Because there's a bunch of different arguments here, and one is about compassion, which I'll speak about. The others will speak of public safety and a few other more obvious ones. But the outreach that we've done since November has been comprehensive, and what we've found is there's a real element here that is being missed. And the feedback that we've, uh, heard from the various sources that we've studied is that this ordinance will kick off a process where the police and social workers can work with individuals to help find permanent housing. This isn't a raid. It's going to happen over time, which is the second point I want to make. This isn't going to be very quickly done. It's going to be weeks or months to help individuals find individual homes. So the parking ordinance sets off a process. It doesn't immediately eradicate someone's house or RV. In addition, these social programs are very well-funded. Uh, in the past two years, the County of San Mateo has over $50 million attributed to uh, low-income housing, which is being deployed, and we're seeing the results of that. And last year, we saw a reduction in homelessness, county-wide by 5%. So these measures are working. We just need to allow them to work. And I guess the real thing I want to say is allowing this situation to persist is probably the least compassionate thing to do. If we had addressed this issue in November like we wanted to, then we would have had that many more opportunities to help individuals find permanent housing. What has happened instead is that the situation has exacerbated. It's gotten worse each week. I've had, you know, individuals in our property and a lot of problems. So I hope that you will vote yes and get this parking ordinance signed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tito Bianchi, followed by Brian Casson.
Hello, Council. Thank you for, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, my name's Tito Bianchi. I'm a Menlo Park resident, a Menlo Park business owner, and pertinently to tonight, a Menlo Park commercial property owner. Uh, the specific property that I manage that would be affected by the ordinance restricting overnight parking is located on Campbell Avenue. Campbell Avenue is clearly currently a hazard. RV parking on both sides of the street has created an extremely narrow drive aisle with really limited visibility, um, exiting any of the perpendicular properties. The narrowed streets make driving a standard-sized vehicle a real challenge. Uh, emergency vehicles would be a major, a major issue. Uh, just as concerning is the driving conditions or the general street conditions. My, uh, my tenants in the building have complained of sidewalks being essentially unusable due to barbecues and heavy amounts of trash, intimidating dogs. We've had, uh, water, uh, occupants of RVs illegally tapping into our onsite water. The police department has told us that many of the RV occupants are actually tenants themselves, uh, explaining that, uh, one person owns multiple RVs, uh, some of them inoperable, and he illegally rents them, or he or she illegally rents them, essentially using our public streets as a private business. Um, I do understand that the RVs and their occupants need a place to park, and the city needs to find suitable locations for this or solutions like the previous speaker mentioned. But in the meantime, this wild west scenario is making Menlo Park workers feel unsafe in their own buildings. Corporations that employ these workers have an obligation to not put their employees in unsafe situations. So they're all making plans to vacate our city as leases expire. Parts of Menlo Park are now completely off the table as, because of these street conditions for new tenants. And so while this is obviously, I'll be done in 10 seconds here, obviously a very human issue as our, as our city continues to lose businesses because it cannot prevent these surroundings. The properties go vacant, the values plummet, and then the budget is, is, uh, clearly affected. So please, like so many other Bay Area cities, empower our hard-working police with the tools they need to make Menlo Park's streets safe. Pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Kason, followed by Karine Murray.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Brian Kason. I'm a property owner in, uh, the neighborhood between Bohannon Drive and, and Marsh Road. Uh, I'm here, um, to request the same standards in our neighborhood that exist in other commercial neighborhoods and across the city of Menlo Park. I want to point out a clarification that our neighborhood lacks parking standards, which was a, a, a gap in policy. Whereas the other commercial neighborhoods in Menlo Park, as well as, uh, the residential neighborhoods, all have parking standards that would prohibit the parking activities by RVs and oversized vehicles that, that are occurring in our neighborhood. So failure to pass this ordinance and failure and, and the persistence of, of this environment has created a, a significant public safety concern. Our neighborhood is rapidly descending into lawlessness and decay. Uh, tenants are leaving. There is, there are increased vacancies. There hasn't been a new lease that has signed, been signed in, in the entire neighborhood in over a year. My partner was onsite in the middle of the day with his two six-year-old twin children and was confronted by a woman with a dog that had to be restrained. It was over 100 pounds. That would have been, uh, uh, you know, could, could have caused significant harm had the dog not been restrained. Um, so the persistence of this situation has, has created a significant risk to human life and safety. Uh, the LA fires, the official post-mortem report, which is, which was completed by IBSH Research cited two things that are relevant here. One was the, the, the age of the Echo Park or the Eaton Park neighborhood, as well as Palisade, which is 1950s, which is the same age as the Suburban Park neighborhood, which are, which is only 100 feet from where where barbecues are being lit, fires are being started, and, uh, diesel generators are being run. So please pass the ordinance. Please take the recommendation of your staff. We need this ordinance passed so that we can start the process to, you know, bring some order back to our neighborhood and, and, and some of these public safety concerns. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karine Murray, followed by Rogelio Banera.
Hello, everybody. And so my name is Karine Murray, and I'm actually, uh, one of, uh, I am one who live in those RVs. I particularly parked on Bohannon, uh, in front of the Abbott, uh, company. I actually, uh, work at the Menlo, uh, Post Office. Um, I do understand all the concern that everybody is having about, you know, the safety, if it's really an issue. Uh, the big issue is will be the driving on, uh, Campbell. I do agree with that. But before any ordinance is, uh, changed, uh, we'd like to have a full, um, option for us to go. Uh, because if you place the ordinance and we don't have anywhere to go, it's like, what happened? What happened to us? Uh, there is issue with some RV who are not registered, who don't even have plate. And I do understand that, you know, I will be for removing those people. Um, it's like, how about permit parking? Where anybody who will have registration insurance on their RV with up-to-date, and, and, uh, we'd be able to have a parking permit temporary until a solution is open for us. That would be nice. Uh, I've been working with Life Move, WeHope, and all those. Um, um, I look at the rents, uh, cafe rent and all those I have, you know, and, um, it's like the last notice I receive is like a studio, 500 square foot for $2,900. And that doesn't include, it doesn't include the electricity or the water. With my salary, I cannot afford that. And I have two dogs. Most of those, those places do not accept dogs. I will not depart from my dogs. So I do understand all the issues that there is. I do not agree with people renting their RV to other people and making business. I do not. But there is some of us who legitimately are trying. I'm working. I'm paying my taxes. I have a circumstances that make me, push me in the street. I am lucky to be able to be the owner of my RV. But I need a solution before I get pushed out of, from where I am. And I really apologize for all the issues that some of us are making, but we are not all part of this group. And I will, I really agree that some of them need to be out of there. But we need to think about people who can. Sorry, I passed my two minutes.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rogelio Banera, followed by Enricetta Molina.
Hello, my name is Rogelio Barrera, and I'm one of the residents there on the, with the RV. And I feel sorry about, you know, the causing these problems. I mean, unfortunately, I don't have other choice to live right now. Uh, otherwise, you know, I feel sorry for them, you know, for those, uh, buildings near there, you know, I really apologize. That's all I can say. Thank you.
The next speaker is Enricetta Molina, followed by Juan Avalon.
Hello, everybody. Um, and I really speak really good English, but, um, I be in the RV, I know. I cannot be in there. I, I know, I, I understand what the city or whatever the, the police saying about us being in the street, you know, but, um, we are over there now for, we want to be there, you know? Um, the rent over here is too expensive for us, and we cannot make enough money for the rents. That's why we are in that, you know? And I try to, um, the, the place that I be, I try to be clean everywhere that I be, you know? I not make it like a mix-up with the, throw garbage in the, in the street. I try to cleaning everywhere that I be. People are upping on me in my RV, you know, they throw probably sewage water. Sometime I, I put water in the, in the, in the street because I don't like the smell. But it's not fair, like, uh, they, they wouldn't like to move us from over there because they don't have no place to go, you know? That's why we are over there. But you guys, then you find something to, we can put it with RV. I going to appreciate it for that, you know? Uh, we don't want to be in the street, but we don't, cannot make it in our rents. That's it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Juan Avalon, followed by Teresa Sanchez.
Yeah, this is, uh, good night. This is, I know English for this one there, pero I learn for this one there, uh, es no complete, okay? This is no discrimination for them. Um, this is for the, this, uh, RV, this for this one, the, the company, the friend. Uh, this what is for, for rent, for rent, this for, es, es, necessary for this one, the, the RV. Um, but this was for the company, the guys, this problem for me. I learn for this one, the, the, the picture for this one, that, for me, the company, it's trouble for me. Uh, this was the police. You got this for the, uh, the, what is the problem? It's the problem. Come on. Ah, so care. This is lay, the police for the problem, nothing for the problem. This one, no problem for, for, for this, the, the police. The car, the for this, no problem for this one for, in, 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 in California. Uh, the respect for this one, no discrimination, you know, demanda, and accord, and accord de reducir. This is no value. This is cleaner for team with the, the way. You. This one eh, no cleaner. You, this one, no cleaner, this was the, the redwood. It's not good. Por eso this was for lay, no for me lay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Teresa Sanchez, followed by Catherine Dumont.
Good night, everyone. I'm sorry, I little speak English and really try. My name is Teresa Sanchez. I'm coming because I'm living the trailer too, live by myself. Because I have four kids, but not really kid right now. They married and they in San Diego, so I'm by myself. I don't feel good because I have cancer. My mama just passed away, like on this month 6, I'm sorry, February 6. It's not easy. And I'm really sorry for the other people. Because I know a lot of people throw garbage, I know. I have a aunt YouTube, I have a lot of evidence also. One day I have an accident outside to the post office. And the manager, he's come, he don't help me, he say, he say, that you fool. And he said, you need pay my tree, that's a big trees. And I can't go on the tree. I'm sorry, on the tree, I'm sorry. And the police come and he say, the manager, the post office, he say, you need pay the tree. I say, why? He say, he's, he send it to me and he say, you need pay the tree. I say, oh, yeah, why the, why he's, I went pay the tree because I don't do anything. I'm walking right there. I stop, I stop, I stop him. Because my friend is walking in a car, passing almost pass accident. So I say, hey, stop, be careful. So that's why I don't see a tree on the floor, big tree. So that's why I have an accident there. I have a videos. And the man, he's going to say, I don't want Mexicans. I don't want to say the bad words. He told me really terrible. I have, I going to the hospital. I lost my, my fingerprints in San Francisco for my social security. So I'm victim to the, somebody raped me. So that's why I am trying to pizza right now with the visa. I waiting right now, like 11 years, 10, 11 years. So I don't have any that place. I swear to God, I don't have any place to go. So the police told me, that's all right, you don't have place. No, no problem. You can stay here. If you live here, you stay. Only we need check the car, the RVs really, that's really work, move it. And they say, I need move every 72 hours, 72 hours, I think. I'm sorry.
A few more seconds.
I'm so sorry, 72 hours. I moved the trailer. Not, not everyone move the trailers. You know, and, but that's, that's bothered me also because that's for everyone, for everyone. Because a lot, a lot of people there, that's nice people, people's going to work. Other people, they have child's and they, the child's always on the bikes. I know that's child's because I'm, I'm working before the school district. I'm substitute teacher. So I'm really, really
Understand, so we have to
Terrible, only I want really
Thank you very much.
Maybe some place, guys, for pay something for the RVs. Also, I don't know why, I don't understand why and who. They sell, they, they, they sell trailers, RVs. That's money, 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 tickets, ticket.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, council. Catherine Dumont, Menlo Park resident. It's hard to follow these stories. Pretty heartbreaking. So I did drive through the area recently. I expecting to see some pretty squalid conditions and it wasn't the case. I was able to drive through, get my car through easily. The sidewalks did not look trashed. Things were pretty neat. There were families with children. There was a gardener's truck, so clearly people are living and working here. But I, I'm really concerned about the idea of passing an ordinance and people saying, oh, don't worry. It's not going to result in people being pushed out and swept away. There's no guarantee of that. That's, this is about a parking ordinance that is clearly stated. It's going to be signed. There will be signs and there will be a period when it will be enforced. And that at the most sounds like maybe 60 days. And after that, once it's on the books, anyone, any business owner could sue to make sure that it's saying it's not moving fast enough. So there's just no, there's no allowance. Because this is an ordinance that anything will happen before that to help folks who are obviously in dire conditions and want change and want to work with services. I'm happy to hear that the city and the staff are working with We Hope and Life Moves. I'm not seeing any data about, you know, how we're moving people into housing, stable housing. So I really feel that has to happen before an ordinance goes into place. Because I think once you do that, your hands are tied. There's no going back. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jenny Michelle, followed by Adina Levin.
Dear Dias, I'm Jenny Michelle, native, living in D3, a recovering homeless or vehicle dweller teacher, a commercial property manager who represents landlord interest by trade. Personal comments: I support both the comments and recommendations made by Menlo Together and former council member Dor. If you're going to drag feet on anything, it should be this item. Wait 12 months before enacting to ensure the residents have all that they need to be successful once the ordinance is in place. Further, in reviewing the staff report presentation on a whole, I agree with the language changes in 050 and 070. But I have concerns about 075. Although there are some adverse impacts to the RV dwellings, that is a residence home. The emergency situation or condition is already present in the form of the housing crisis. Therefore, the threshold for an emergency is met. When you move off-grid workers from their established place of residence from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., we don't stop existing. We just relocate and try and get more shut eye before our first shift starts. The homeless services section is one thing, but the staff report fails to detail the robust actions that the community outreach folks must take in the form of anti-displacement measures. And finally, I call out my colleagues who have failed to address the housing supply crisis head-on. Don't like seeing unhoused in your backyard? Do everything in your power to build housing. I've seen owners, my friends and colleagues, with the will to make housing supply happen. Stop pretending that you don't have the ability to make meaningful impacts here. Thank you, Jenny, from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block.
Our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Eileen Latman.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And the topic being discussed has, there are issues of public safety and order and issues of housing and displacement. In the city's recently adopted housing element and environmental justice element, we have really important policies to not displace residents. And what we have heard from tonight is residents and neighbors who are at risk of being displaced. And the, depending on what we do, we'll either immediately or quickly displace people or we can take time to work on what are better housing solutions that do not immediately or quickly displace people. I was glad to hear in the initial comment that there is a extended time period in mind. And if so, can we not start with a study session? Can we not start with this issue, looking at it from a perspective of housing and anti-displacement and work out what are the options for people that are living here and are being as, you know, law-abiding as they can? Certainly, there are safety issues in the previous item. People mentioned, the police mentioned stolen cars. Stealing cars is already illegal. Dealing drugs, which is already illegal. There was a story about a threatening dog, which if there's, you know, someone with a threatening dog that has a house that is, it's already illegal to threaten people. So there are already laws on the books that can be used to address the existing safety problems. So I would urge city council to work on a timeline that will prioritize preventing displacement and housing for our very brave neighbors who came here and spoke. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Eileen Latman, followed by Margarita Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I represent property owners along Campbell and Scott Boulevard. And I'm here to express our strong support for the proposed ordinance amending Title 11 of the municipal code regarding parking regulations and oversized vehicles. I support these, these reasons for these critical issues. Number one, as many have said, is the city, is the safety of the individuals leaving the parking lot. The vehicles obstruct access, reduce visibility. With the petition that we've signed, that we've collected employee testimonies highlighting dangerous incidents caused by this obstruction of view. All business owners, large and small, support this ordinance, and it is reflected by the number of signatures in our petition. We believe this ordinance will provide Menlo Park PD with essential resources to better protect our community. Secondly, I like to address that this is in violation of citywide parking standards. As an industrial park near Highway 101, we are overlooked of parking ordinances that are enforced throughout the city of Menlo Park. This ordinance aims to enhance safety, clarity, and enforceability across our entire city, which not leaving the office buildings neglected in this area. We ask you to consider the needs of the owners of the business park here. Third, we empathize with the RV residents and agree that there needs to be social services to assist them with the housing. However, it's unfair that the local business owners must suffer while we wait for the city to address these issues. We had witnessed our businesses being used for school enrollment, having a lot of illegal activity happening. And it's just unfair for the business owners to have to suffer that. We hope that you can support change these issues pertaining to the unhoused. But more importantly, we believe that this saying yes on this ordinance will help set the standard for what to come. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Margarita Mendez, followed by Alex and Danielle.
Good evening, council members. I am a longtime resident of Lorelei Lane, and I am aware of the RV situation behind my home on Lorelei Lane. My house has a fence, and then there's the tracks and the post office. More and more RVs have parked on Bohannon during the pandemic. But this is not a parking issue. This is a human housing issue. These RV dwellers have nowhere to go. If the city does not have a plan as to where these neighbors can go, then we should not find them nor push them into another community. Menlo Park is unaffordable, and this is the issue. Housing is neither plentiful nor available to many. I am empathetic to my neighbors, friends, and the business owners that are impacted. But I urge you that without a plan in place to house parking lots for the RV dwellers, that you vote no on the oversized parking ordinance. Thank you very much for your service to our city and welcoming people who are not as lucky as we are to own a home or be able to afford the crazy rents in Menlo Park. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Alex and Danielle, followed by Randy Avalos.
Hello.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, hi. Hi, this is Danielle, and I am a Menlo Park resident. I got involved through my faith community in assisting one of the families that live in the RVs that we're discussing tonight. And so when, when there is a human face to it, it does make it very difficult to just boil it down to, it's just heartbreaking. It's just the stories that we've been hearing tonight. It's very heartbreaking. And I guess, I, well, so many people before me were very eloquent in saying that, yes, I mean, there are, there are many needs to be weighed with the, the, the commercial interests in the area, how they're affected. But, you know, unless there is a solution in place for where we can have the people living in the RVs go to a safe place, I just really encourage the city to look at that first. At least have a transition period while people are getting connected and supported with resources to have a more stable living situation. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Randy Avalos.
Good evening, city council. Randy Avalos, District 5. So first, I want to applaud the police for standing up that crisis response team. That's awesome to see. As well as city staff and outreach to our RV dwellers. That was great work. Regarding the RV ban, you know, there is clearly conflict in our community. This ordinance is designed to kick out that part of the community, perhaps slowly, but eventually and completely. So one thing to consider is perhaps a permit system for RVs that includes all districts, including District 5. Instead of being concentrated in one area, might be a good path to help alleviate the conflict in our community. You know, it's our community strength derives from inclusion and generosity, and this is not that. Thank you.
Okay, I am seeing no further hands or cards for this item. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Karen. So thank you, everyone who provided, you know, public comment. We, I think one adjective I heard was brave. I would add thoughtful, compassionate comments all around from all members of our community. And we are, as I see it, one, one community, and we are struggling with this issue. We have for some time. We have for some time, and like many others have. So with that, I would bring it to the dais to see if there is some additional questions for the commander or for others on staff, our comments.
Could you describe more about the outreach efforts that have been made? And also, can you give us a better idea of the numbers of people who've been contacted? And the opportunities that were offered and what the responses were?
So I know that when we made notifications at this meeting, we made notifications to 53 different vehicles that would have fallen under the definition of oversized vehicles. Of that number, using We Hope's demographics, about 25%, 20% to 25% were families. Some of those, we know, were specifically told to park there because of the lack of parking restrictions in Menlo Park. And some of those also, we know, were provided RVs from charitable organizations and then told to park there as well, in addition to some of the stories that you heard here tonight. Every single contact that we have made, every person is offered some sort of assistance. We have one code enforcement officer that his predominant duty is dealing with the parking issues in the Bohannon area. So he has regular contact with, I'll just keep using the 53 vehicles on a regular basis. He regularly contacts or has points of contact with We Hope, with Life Moves. So it's consistent. If he meets somebody new, he hears a new story or sees a new circumstance or situation, he's able to directly reach out to the specific agency that he knows is going to be able to have the best impact on that situation. So it's certainly not a lack of availability or funding, or we always have the ability to help out. And I know that later on in one of the staff reports for the, some of the things that we're also available to do, there are charities that we work with that go far beyond what the traditional Life Moves that We Hope would do. We've been able to offer assistance in paying for registration. I know that we've been able to have, provide transportation for people for going to job interviews. So there's not a lack of availability for assistance that our department's able to offer, either personally through our members of our agency or through the social service agencies that we work with.
I appreciate that. Thank you. How about, what available housing is there for anyone who's trying to move into more stable housing?
I couldn't answer it, it'd be up to We Hope and Life Moves. I know it's constantly changing with the different organizations that they work with. I couldn't tell you from the police department. We refer them to one of those agencies specifically.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Thanks. I had two questions to build off of Councilmember Nash's question. So could you go a little further with your first answer around the outreach? So you described the outreach that was done. So what's the interpretation of why things aren't moving? And it's because I've heard a lot of comments from the community that we should offer those things. So it sounds like we're offering those things. And I would appreciate a perspective on why the numbers are increasing versus decreasing related to that. And then the second question interconnected is if you could, you mentioned the Willow Road area. And if you could highlight what you see as the differences between the Willow Road situation and how that unfolded versus what's happening in Bohannon.
So the differences for Willow Road specifically were those were people living in Cloverleaf as opposed to people living in an RV. I mean, specifically a shelter, which makes it a little bit, a little more enticing to find a shelter as opposed to living in the Cloverleaf themselves. And it was a much smaller group of people. And they knew that in a certain amount, they had a certain amount of time because we were going to come through and do some clearing of the brush. So I mean, there was, there was nowhere else to go. We were going to clear that area. And what was your, the first part of your question?
Oh, your answer to Councilmember Nash's first question described the outreach that was done. So I would assume with so much of that being offered, the numbers would stay flat or go in a different direction. I guess I'm just trying to interpret why that outreach didn't result in a reduction in numbers or just your impressions of that.
So I can give you anecdotally, from my experiences as a police officer, which wouldn't cover all of the RVs. So in certain circumstances, I know specifically with the RV situation, we have to deal with, well, what's going to happen to my RV? Well, we're concerned with finding you housing. We're not concerned with what's going to happen to the RV. We can't find a storage facility for your RV. We're concerned with finding you housing. So that's been something that, a sticking point that we've tried to deal with that sometimes isn't working out the way they want. Can you sell my RV for me, which is something we're not willing to do? Other issues have to deal with, I know people with pets. Well, I have pets. What's going to happen to my pets? Can they go with me? Well, unfortunately, with this housing facility that you're able to go to, that one doesn't allow pets. So that's a deal breaker. It's those types of things. And again, this is all anecdotal. I don't mean to paint it with a wide brush. But some facilities have specific rules. I know that some require you have a job, so those types of things. But there is no shortage of available opportunities through all of these social service agencies that we work with.
Thanks.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and thank you, Commander Dixon, for the presentation. Out of the 53 RVs, has anyone accepted assistance?
I know of a handful, probably three or four specifically. And I know that one of them specifically, yes, because she came back and thanked us with the code enforcement officer for putting her in a position where she was forced to go and accept assistance based upon the circumstances she was in. And that was just recently, it's two weeks ago. So I know, yes.
And has that, so would you say the timeline was maybe about a year that it took for the person to accept the services?
It was several months.
Several months, okay.
Even with the CW CRT program that I mentioned earlier, with the homeless people that were dealing with mental health issues, I know with one of the successes that we were just speaking of this week, that was a four-month process of constant weekly interaction in an effort just to try to talk that person into seeking some outside assistance that was successful in us getting her something that's going to be long-term. It wasn't something where we were just able to walk in with a clinician and say, we have help for you. And she thought that was the greatest thing in the world, and she was moved in. It wasn't that simple, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wise.
So thank you for the presentation tonight. I'm wondering, in this outreach, is there also, what is sort of the medium? It sounds like you guys are physically going to these RVs and speaking with residents. Is there also a webpage, pamphlets in multiple languages that's available that we can point people to? I just want to make sure there are multiple avenues to look at resources just because I think it'd be quite intimidating having a police officer come to your door. I just want to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can on the outreach front.
So from the police department's perspective, we're more of a liaison. The person who's doing this is a code enforcement officer. It's a non-sworn member of our department. The great thing is, is because of this regular interaction, he knows the story of a lot of these individuals with regards to like We Hope or Life Moves. They have outreach workers, and this is all that they do. So they have those pamphlets in multiple languages. They have those types of people that are able to go back. And this is, they'll focus on Bohannon, Scott, and Campbell every Wednesday or every third Tuesday. And knowing that we have to talk to this person because we haven't heard from them in a couple of days. And we're able to, we know that Person A, we haven't heard from him in a week as far as the police department's concerned. The vehicle hasn't moved. We're really concerned, they'll send somebody out. Because based upon those relationships he's built with those agencies, they'll send somebody out. And they're much more amenable to talk to them oftentimes than us. And that's where we're building that bridge. And there's, it's effective in getting them to move those vehicles oftentimes than the police officer knocking the door. They just won't answer the door.
Thank you so much. And then additionally, so because we've heard so many questions from residents around, there are other laws that sort of cover the issues that we're seeing. Why can't we use those other laws for enforcement? I'm hoping to get some clarification for those questions as to why you all feel moving forward with the ordinance is the best path forward.
So the ordinance is, there are other laws, and the ordinance is just another tool. The citations are another tool. And we do utilize existing laws. There are current California vehicle codes that allow us to give citations for not having expired registration, for the way parking in a red zone, those types of things. And if those tickets aren't taken care of, then it impacts the ability to get a current registration, which then there's a state law that says if you don't have current registration, then the state wants the car impounded until the registration visa paid. Those are things that we utilize right now, that are utilized statewide by every city in the state of California. There's also state laws that allow us, if a car is leaking biohazard or raw sewage, that allow us the ability to go in and say, this is a health hazard, that we have to do something. And the few vehicles that we have towed, it was most of the time because they were leaking raw sewage, and we had to do something. So there are, yeah, there are existing things that we're allowed to do, but it doesn't impact all of those cars. This is just another tool.
Do those tools typically work, and they're just not applicable to all of the vehicles? Or is it something where they don't work that well?
There is no tool that we have right now that would work for all 53. Honestly, we would have used it, or at least even for half of them. It'll work for some on Sunday. We could go through and say, a perfect example of that is, there's a state law that says you have to move your car every 72 hours. And we also have a municipal code. So we can go through and mark all 53 today. And tomorrow, 52 of them will move. And then we start from scratch on all of those cars again. But maybe one of them didn't. So then we, so that we've addressed that one. But we can do that every three days. It's just a cat and mouse game. So that, again, that's one tool that we'll utilize, but it doesn't address the other 52. We'll try something else. Maybe we'll find housing for the 52nd one and on the 51st one. So that's what we've been doing, but we've been doing that for a long time. This is just another tool.
Thanks, Commander Dixon. You reminded me of a smaller question I had is when you said we've been doing this a long time. I thought I'd heard that this, it's been about a year since this really had become an issue that we really felt like we needed to address. Or this wasn't the question I was going to ask, but you just reminded me of, how long would you describe this being a challenge for that area?
I think it's been longer than a year. It's been much longer than a year.
Okay.
But we've been dealing with homelessness in Menlo Park. I mean, I've been doing, I did a study session before council in 2015, 2016. I know that Councilmember Taylor and I were on a task force dealing with homelessness in the area across from Meta years and years and years ago. So these are all challenges that we've dealt with consistently. We've just been trying different tools.
Right. Yeah, that, thank you for that. That just helps level set. The real question I was going to ask is, so I've heard from members of the community saying, well, if you're not going to, if you're not going to support, if you're not going to support this, could you delay it for a year or six months or three months? And I'd be curious to get your perspective on the pros and cons of, say, a six-month implementation delay. And that's not unprecedented. We did that with sort of like the leaf blower ordinance to give extra time for outreach. So I'd just be interested in your perspective of, say, something like a six-month delay before this goes into effect and the pros and cons of that.
From my perspective, we can do anything. It's, I know one of the things that we're working with right now, one of our partners that I spoke with on a conference call yesterday. So the area adjacent to Bohannon, there's a fenced area that runs along the railroad tracks. That's actually private property that's owned by Sam Trans. So they're waiting to figure out what happens tonight because they're going to do their part to enforce the parking restrictions along their side of the roadway, but they don't want to force it into Menlo Park. So I could say to them, well, the city of Menlo Park is going to do a six-month moratorium while they do some education and outreach. They could decide, well, we're not waiting. We're, you know, this is, we're going to do our part here. So those are things that we have to work through. But if the city wanted to do a 90-day or a six-month, we'll figure out a way to make it work and that's going to end up being successful. I mean, we can do all the outreach that we can and hopefully be as successful as we can. But in the end of the six months, knowing that six months is six months, we're going to start.
Great.
Thanks. I would only follow up on that is that, given the situation we know exists there now, I don't understand, like, the delay. Any implementation will take time and be varied. Also, I think it's not an apples-to-apples comparison to suggest a delay of a leaf blower ban when there was a transition that the city was making based on its, what it was prioritizing versus a scenario where we have a significant portion of our community, even some in our community who are availing themselves of this situation, acknowledging that it is really suboptimal on a number of levels. And so I don't know, I appreciate that, but I don't know that that's an apt comparison.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just, it's not unprecedented for us to, you know, delay something. That was just the one that came to mind as an example. But yeah, not apples-to-apples.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Taylor, is that a ghost hand or is that fresh?
No, that is a fresh hand. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And just to follow up on a few things that Commander Dixon shared, with the homeless task force out in the Ravenswood Triangle, I believe there was around 45 folks living out there at the time. And now, I want to say it's maybe around 10. It didn't move everyone out for a long period of time. But however, I am believing that roughly 30 folks were housed that were living there. And that was because there was action taken. So going back to the RVs, it's my understanding that this area is zoned for commercial. It's not zoned for residential, which is one of the challenges here. I believe that an ordinance is a tool for PD, but it's also a tool for city council, for the public, and also for our other service providers to be able to continue to do the work. Having a timeline that extends its out a year, well, it's already been a year of the increased activity from PD. And maybe three people were housed. So if we delay this for another 12 months and then add another 12 months, then maybe six people would have been housed as opposed to doing something fully and thoughtfully that is not going to impact someone tomorrow. Because I think that's the concern. And once we adopt the ordinance, we could have it effective whether it is March 1st Um, once we adopt the ordinance, we could have it effective whether it is March 1st or April 1st or May 1st. Um, but I do believe we need to take some action, um, this evening. And I do know that the police department, along with the service providers are going to do exactly what they say in addition to what the county is doing. So work is being done. Getting folks that are sleeping in places that we're not isn't easy. You have to build trust. And you also have to, they have to accept the help because we can't force it upon anyone. So I believe this is a step. I would have supported it the last time it was on the agenda. So I hope it gets support to move forward now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Is, are there any other council comments? I'm also happy to entertain a motion. I will make a motion if there is. Like Vice Mayor or back anywhere.
Well, I guess the first thing I want to say is that, um, we are speaking about moving. RVs out, but what we're really talking about is trying to find. Safe, stable housing for individuals that will accept it. And so I guess one of the pieces that I feel is missing so far, and I'd like to see. Um, is what is the available? What? What housing is available for people? And what, how do we make this happen? And I'm not saying that we need to wait for that, but I think it's a piece that needs to be moving in parallel. Is, um, more information about how people can get. Housed who want to. I understand that there's, um, they may not take. Uh, the dogs, for example, so that may be a unique case, but for people who, um, can. Work within the given requirements. Is there housing available? And if so, how do they get it? If not, how do they, we heard that, or maybe it was an email that we received. Where the, um, people were having trouble even getting on a waiting list. And just how do we make this happen so that. It's working so that we can get people housed who want to be. And then I guess. So that's one request, um, is somehow to get that information if that's available. And then the other, um, question I have is what safe parking? Is there around, not in Menlo Park, but, um, locally, I'm assuming that there are no spaces available. But just is there any information available about? Places where people might be able to move. Their RVs of those people who really want to, um, remain in their RVs.
Uh, let's see, Vice Mayor, maybe, maybe I could help with that. Cause I, I thought there was a bit of a discussion across the council members, but it's still with questions. Just to staff, that's where we're at. Yeah. So on some of these topics, um, uh. These would be kind of above and beyond the specific ordinance. So again, it kind of is, uh, hand in hand with that, uh, info item on M6. So there could be follow ups specific to the, um. Uh, challenges for the unhoused, unsheltered. We can do that as a regular basis in parallel, but that's not the responsibility of our police department. So, um, we can, uh, supplement that, but I think. So if there's a council motion on the actual action item tonight, and then a request for some additional follow up. That might be helpful as part of, um. As part of that aspect of deliberation. If it's, cause it sounds like the questions that you're answering, asking, you know that we necessarily don't have this evening. We could follow up with that. I just need to kind of get the proper sequencing.
That makes sense to have it as part of the other item. That's fine.
Okay, great.
I do have one other question about, um. The ordinance and that's, um, what, how do the city parking lots fall into all of this? Cause they're not near municipal. Buildings. Are they included? Or how does that work? And I'm speaking specifically about our downtown parking lots, although there may be others around.
Good evening, council members. Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. The, um. Overnight parking restrictions, the code, uh, the proposed code changes include all parking lots, city facilities. It's all inclusive.
That's what I thought I had read, but then there keeps to be reference to parking lots near city facilities. So that's, it is all inclusive.
It was meant to be all inclusive. Yes.
Thank you. Could you give us some sort of timeline for implementation if we do pass this?
So if we would likely do, if it were to pass tonight, we would likely do at least a 30 day, um, education. Um, campaign or, um, and then there would still be the time period that we'd have to install signage. Uh, and then the 30 days would start after the signage was involved. So we're looking at least 45 days. Um, before we would start enforcement.
And just to be clear, enforcement means like a citation, right? We, we, we're not talking about enforcement as in tone ween.
Correct. Yeah. I mean enforcement in the sense of that we would go out and start putting.
Yeah.
Actually going out and saying, hey, here's your courtesy notice. Here is the, we're giving you notification that the ordinance is in effect.
I will just say, one of the things that I am concerned about is, um, we do know that there are families with children who are in the schools and just how. How they are affected. And so. 45 days would put it, um. Mid. I guess it would be April. So. How? Well, let me think about it. Or if you have any comments about that.
So this would be no different than we would handle a new no left turns. Uh, provision or like we had the construction going over one on one where we made the no right turns from the willows. We did an educational effort, um, same thing, 30 days. So it would just be consistent with what we've done across the city with new regulations with regard to. New regu-, uh, new laws for turns or for lane changes, that type of thing, just for parking.
My concern is that, um, I do not have kids in school, but, um, I believe school. The school year goes till about, till mid-May, June. Um, just that kids, that. There would be no disruptions in a child's education.
I wonder, I, I. That's probably one of my largest concerns as well. Um, and I wonder in, um, what you were talking about earlier with. Running, um, not only further outreach, but trying to get as many plans as possible. If we could just sort of like add that. To the list of our, um. Yeah, I, I would. Yes, I would like to see that as well.
And just from my understanding before, that is what engaging the school district or, or?
I think, well, please correct me if I'm wrong. I interpreted it as, um, engaging nonprofits, but then yes, we could perhaps also. Um, reach out to the school district and see what we can do.
Again, Councilmember Schmidt.
So I think, uh. I, I will. Not in the interest of stifling discussion, but more just to, uh. Maybe be the first to take the leap to. Talk about where, where I am at the moment. Um. Uh, this has been my least favorite topic, being a new council member to study and learn about this. And it's really. Challenging across multiple dimensions. And I've, I've, uh, gone back and forth and tried to come up with solutions and. So a, a, a couple of things that are, that are on my mind. This has been longer than a year. I, I wasn't going back all the way to the five year period, but the RV situation. Uh, has, has affected residents for, uh, quite a while. Um, my understanding is, uh, an RV safe parking program is not on the horizon. And regardless of how we debate that, it's two or three years potentially to stand it up. So personally, I'm feeling like it's pretty unreasonable to ask. Business owners and tenants and residents in that area to please bear with us for another two to three years. That said, uh, I understand there's a, a delay in implementation and everything. So I. I'm feeling like we're in a very untenable position where we, we really need to move forward with supporting the ordinance. I would. Ask for something like a six month delay for. School and finding options and reconsidering services and other things. I, I would say a year, but I don't know that that's going to have much of an impact, but at least a six month. Potential delay would be where my heart is telling me we at least need to go. So, um, anyway, I, I, I'm at risk of not babbling on, but, um. I, I feel like, you know, there, there's not a, an RV oriented solution on the horizon. Um, and, and so to ask for an indefinite wait while we figure it out, doesn't feel very reasonable. And so, um. That's kind of where my head and heart is at the moment.
So, so I'll share my, I, I am supportive. Of moving forward. I, I am empathetic about the, the situation, but. I, I think to let the situation continue as it has, it actually does. No one any good. And, and, and so for, for me, again, I, I think it is. The, the time tack now, and I, I do think, again. Engagement, uh, from city staff and the police department has been one of, of great empathy. And concern. Like I, I, but, but I, I think the scenario has won that is, like I said, uh, if that has. Reached a certain degree of criticality. And, and specifically I would be supportive of the motion as, as a motion. Um, as written and, and not with a delay because. Like if, if I'm asking for a delay of six months, if I'm going to be frank, Councilmember Schmidt. Can they move to your block for six months? Are your neighbors going to be okay with that for six months? Can we find business owners in the city who say yes, for six months? Let dozens of RVs park in front of my business. So if your neighbors aren't going to be okay with it for six months. Why should we ask? The businesses and the residents there to be okay with it for six more months? And to me, that, that's what it, it comes to the issue. Someone in public comment mentioned this idea of like, well, maybe we should spread this out in every district. And I'm like, yeah, but it was, it was a farce of a statement. We know that's not going to happen. We know that the city would never, the residents would never, uh, you know, sign up for some scenario where it's like, okay, let's spread RVs throughout the city. That would never be okay. And your constituents would never be okay with it. Neither would the constituents for any other council member. So you, you can take the position you want, but that's fine. But let's not insult the situation. And I think that that's exactly what that does.
I'll, I'll just jump in. I. I mean, I appreciate that. I would say. I'm just taking it in the moment. So I, I understand in a hypothetical situation. Whatever district this would impact. It's not tenable, but I, I'm not really talking hypotheticals at all. I'm really saying. This is where they are. This is where they are today. This could feel like an eviction. And so if it was me living in an RV. I would appreciate a little bit more time to figure things out. So. I appreciate the point. I think it's a fair point, but it's, this isn't a hypothetical situation. This is like, this is where we are today. So.
It's also, also, if I'm going to say it's not hypothetical for you to say, I welcome you to my block. I welcome, my neighbors and I welcome you to our block. That's not hypothetical. You can say that right now.
I would welcome them to our block if that was permitted. I don't think it's a matter.
If that was permitted, I like the qualifier at the end there. I like the qualifier at the end there. If that was permitted.
But it's not.
Which, which means that you, you're not.
Well, we're.
It's not enough.
We're residential though. So I, I, I'm trying to.
I, I, I know. I appreciate your exception. But the empathy.
Yeah.
Should override the exception. But it, it should, but it didn't.
Well, I, I think. I'm still talking reality. So if we're talking my block, I can invite them all day, but it's residential. So I. I'm not really trying to debate the point. I'm trying to say, this is where we are. This isn't a hypothetical situation. And. If we can give them more time to the people who live in these situations. To figure something out, that's the only reason for the delay. It's not that they're in. Two or three or four or five. That, that actually is not. Where my head is. So I, I appreciate the point and. It's not to move them around the city and move them to a different block or different residents or a neighborhood. It's to give people more time to figure things out. But it's as simple as that.
And, and I would say nothing is happening immediately. And, and again, it's not clear that, that. You, you know, again, nothing is happening immediately. And it's in, in, from everything indication and signal I've seen that anything that would happen. Would happen with a great, uh, deliberation and great empathy. So I, I, like, I, I don't, I don't. I, I don't see the point, but, but I, I will say that like we can, yes, it is, it is hypothetical. For you. But it is not hypothetical for those who have dealt with this for years. Right? And the whole idea of this role is putting yourself into those shoes. Every day, putting yourself into situations where you would not go and saying, how would I want to respond? How would I want to be treated? In those situations, looking at all parties. Balancing it. And so that's, that's it. Because again, everything is, is going to be like, like hypothetical for someone. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, I just wanted to, to make a suggestion just based on what, um, some council members. Have shared about their concerns around, um, school, um, our school age children being impacted. And having the ordinance going to effect on June 1st. It also. Vice Mayor Nash is shaking her head.
I'm sorry. Um, I actually have a different opinion, but I will let you proceed. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so that, that was actually it. Was just to make that suggestion if, if that is sufficient. Or if that, or if it needs to be longer. I don't know. Just trying to find, um, a compromise here.
So then do you want to share?
I guess I do. So a couple of things. One is I actually don't know that we need to, to hold on implementation, but we need to hold on. Any final movement that would. Impact kids being removed from the school. So it doesn't mean that we couldn't start. Having the conversations and, um, providing the. The notices. But it means that nothing would be actually done, which I know that you're saying that it will take quite a while anyway. So this. Um, but nothing would actually, we would not be moving kids before their school year is ended. Um, but there could be notices and all before that, um, is my, um, where I am coming from. Where, um, and I actually. Am not sure what the role is of this city with this school in that situation. Um, I don't know that there is one. Um, okay. And then, um, as far as my. What I would like to see from, um, about. More information about housing, I think could be covered by having a presentation perhaps from. We hope and life moves, um, rather than having. Staff. Pull it together in a report and that, it, it just to have a active presentation from those organizations would be. Where we could actually ask the questions after, as we do with presentations, I think would be good. As everybody else. As everybody else, I'm having a lot of trouble with this. But I also believe that it has been going on for a long time and that we need to things are not going to change until we do something different. And so I'm reluctantly supportive of the move of the ordinance. I would like to make sure that the kids do not are not disrupted prior to the school year ending. And then maybe, you know, some grace period, because we don't want, again, just the families being the the family disruption that this will cause. Obviously, the the real goal is to get people housed who want to be housed and or to help find parking for people who don't. I personally do not think that this city is in the position to handle going into safe zones and parking and all of that. And I really would like to see us partnering with the county on that sort of, or perhaps I know that Councilmember Schmidt has talked about other cities. I think Councilmember Taylor has also had some outreach there. But essentially, I don't see the city having the resources or the expertise to be able to get into that area ourselves. So I would, well, I would like to see us working with others and that that would, who have the expertise. And primarily, and very much having the county involved in this. I think it's acknowledged as a region wide issue, not just an issue for for Menlo Park. And so, and I guess I believe it a ton.
I I will. I will move unless I hear otherwise. Councilmember Taylor, I heard otherwise.
Thank you. I I forgot to mention about to ask about the citation amounts, or is that a discussion for a second reading?
And you you wanted to know that, like, the citation amount and like, sort of the, like, how it it like, sort of ratchets up, like, one citation after the next?
Yes.
Does someone have that information?
Currently, the citation amount for the the penalty amount is $45. That's consistent with our overnight parking ordinance. All of our municipal amounts are $45.
And and so just going through that process, then, like, so, right, you said there is the courtesy notice, right? And and so at that point, you also, like, you know, register the license plate that you they've given, been given a courtesy notice, right? And so then a an actual citation would follow that, like, when, like, what, but then the the courtesy notice is what, 45 days or something like that? And so would it then be after that 45 days that he would actually get a a citation?
No, so the the intent of the courtesy notice is to show what day that car was parked. And in effect, whenever that car is cited again, or the vehicle cited again, it'll always show that date it was given the courtesy notice. So in theory, if it was parked on Monday and given a courtesy notice on Monday, on Tuesday, it could get a citation showing that it was parked on Monday. And that was the day it got a courtesy notice. Theoretically, it could continue to get cites every day. Or it could be, it could get a courtesy notice on Monday and not be parked again for six months and get a citation with the reflection of that one Monday that it got the courtesy notice. And then we reset them every year.
Then, so the value of the courtesy notice is what, like, 24 hours? It's like you gotta, because obviously, you're you're giving a courtesy. So what's, I'm trying to understand, what's the courtesy? Like, right, that, like, at that moment, like, I could have given you a citation, but I gave you the notice. But then, like, an hour later, I can actually give you an actual citation? Or is it, like, the next day or?
It's it's just, in effect, we don't, we don't use the word warning. Because if you have a permit on your car, we put the license plate in there. It's just that it's just so we know that you knew about the the ordinance. So you could call it a warning if you want. It just shows the way that the computer knows that you were marked as parking on the street during a specific day and were advised of the ordinance. And then that way, we know that on that day, you were advised of the ordinance for at least the next 364 days until it resets. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
To the mayor. Thank you. I have one last question. And this has to do with how I've seen the RV area advertised. Does the ordinance make it technically illegal or against the rule so that a realtor or landlord, so to speak, isn't advertising and saying, I have RVs on Campbell Street, ready for rent?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So it's my understanding, I've seen it on Nextdoor, where RVs are being advertised as for rent. And does the ordinance impact the ability for a realtor or landlord of the RVs from advertising it?
The the ordinance itself would only impact the parking of a vehicle on a city street between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00 AM.
Okay.
Is there anyone, no, you, the commander?
Yeah, no, I I agree with that. I I will say, I have seen another ordinance in another city recently that has done what you just described, Councilmember Taylor, which has made it illegal to, like, aid and abet and assist someone in the illegal parking of an oversized vehicle. But no, the proposed ordinance before you tonight does not do that.
Okay, well, I will, I think there's been a robust discussion. And so I'll move and we'll we'll see where 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 the council was at. And so I will, no, I won't, because the vice, no. Yeah, of course.
City Attorney Doherty, did, were there suggestions for the language around the violations, the penalties?
Yes, it not critical, but if the council would entertain some modifications to make clearer that the penalty amounts and citation amounts are set forth in the city's master fee schedule. Per Councilmember Taylor's questions, we could clarify subsection F. And then I think we'd bring back, along with the second reading, modifications to the master fee schedule, just make clear that this section falls within the same overnight parking prohibition section and and is subject to the same citation amounts. So if the council's interested, I could, I could read some language that I had been potentially thinking about modifying subsection F with to make clear the citation amounts.
Do you want to read it? Or wait, we'll take a moment.
Okay, so the language that I that I would suggest we change subsection F to read as follows, violations of this section shall be subject to the following penalties. One, the issuance of citations in an amount set forth in the Menlo Park Master Fee Schedule. And or two, the towing of any oversized vehicle that remains in violation of this section following issuance of a notice of violation. Any member of the police department authorized by the chief of police may tow and or cause to be removed a vehicle that has stopped standing or parked in violation of this section from the street or highway in the manner and subject to the requirements of the vehicle code, section 22650 at SEC. The remedies set forth in this section shall be cumulative in addition to any other remedies civil, equitable, or criminal afforded to the city under the law.
Okay, well, I'm I'm gonna try this for, like, I think, the fourth or fifth time. I I will make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, amending title 11 of the municipal code to revise sections related to stopping parking and standing for vehicle and establish parking restrictions for oversized vehicles and accept the modifications as described by the city attorney related to the the citation. So I I will make that motion.
Councilmember Taylor, was that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by City Councilmember Taylor to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending title 11 of the existing municipal code related to stopping, parking, and standing for vehicles and established parking regulations related to oversized vehicles and adding clarification to subsection F referencing the master fee schedule. Any other city council question or discussion? Yes, go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
Did just someone want to make a comment? Yeah. No, I was, I was just stopping to 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 say you can make a comment.
Thank you. So would any questions about a presentation of We Hope and Life Moves be part of a future, the informational item, not now? Am I correct?
In in the interest of time, I'm happy to entertain that if that's the consensus across the council. One thing to keep in mind, though, is scheduling time on council agendas. So in terms of when that might happen, I definitely cannot guarantee that for you because there are quite a few things coming forward. But if that's the reflection of the overall council, I'm happy to kind of hear that now instead of waiting to the M6 item later later on.
I understand the issues with the agenda very well. Just, I think this is something that would be timely with the somewhere within the next couple of months because of implementation of the ordinance and trying to get as much information to the RV residents as possible.
I mean, could that be framed as asking for an update on the ordinance and implementation? Because on on a reg, some regular cadence, because my understanding is, part of this process, you will be engaging with some of those key stakeholders, like We Hope and others that we have in the past. And so I I don't know what makes sense on the staff or for the council, but to have some regular update on how this is going. And and so I'm gonna look to either the.
Yes, it, I'm happy to kind of figure out what's the most kind of efficient and effective way, given the overall timelines. I'm not exactly sure what that is as of this evening, but I I can report back to the council.
Right, I I hear you. And and I don't want to put the cart before the horse because we actually haven't voted on this. So we don't know if there's something that will needed to be reported. And so I I will express this as some maybe weak consensus. And the staff will determine what implementing that might look like if this passes. Yeah, Vice Mayor.
And one other question is just, if we, how do we acknowledge that we do not want to disrupt the kids' schools? The school education before the end?
Yeah, I would think that would be more of a looking this way than the to the our police department at this point in time. So I I can say, as a practical matter, as a parent with children in schools recently, as it relates to this school year, there there'd be no no impact. I think beyond the school year, the potential for impacts. So I'd say, if the concern is this school year, we will work to ensure that there's no impact. But it's not going to be like a requirement per se, but you'd have our collective support to kind of ensure that.
And it does not need to be part of.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Clerk Karen, I think I think we're ready to proceed to a vote.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So the motion as read by Mayor Combs, second by City Councilmember Taylor. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
I want to be clear that this is a no way reflection on Chief Norris and his team. My vote is no.
City Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
And Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Schmidt dissenting. And do have a request for all of our microphones, if we're not in use, if we can turn them off. I just, I think we're catching some feedback. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the final regular business item. Consider and adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. Here to introduce the item, Administrative Services Director Brittany Mello.
Good evening, City Council. We are here tonight to present the budget amendments for the fiscal year 2425. I have with me our Assistant Director Jared Hanson, as well as some of our terrific finance staff members. On our agenda tonight, we'll review the budget amendments, as well as how these amendments impact our general fund reserves. Spend some time on our grant funding overview, look at our staffing update, and then move to the city council direction. So for our budget amendments, the following items have already been approved via separate city council actions that have been taken to council between July 1 and the present. Items such as our labor agreements with multiple groups, the Bellhaven Community Campus Clean Energy Infrastructure Project, and so forth, listed here. We also have our proposed fiscal year amendments that are before you tonight for consideration. These include revenue adjustments totaling $3.8 million. The majority of this is related to our transient occupancy tax adjustments, or our hotel bed tax for $2.68 million. So some of that is looking at our revenues year to date. We also have our final revenues that were confirmed in our annual comprehensive financial review that the council adopted recently. And then we also have our measure ballot measure that went before the community in November that was approved, that raises the TOT rate from 12% to 15 and a half percent over a two year span. So this number includes our projections for two quarters at the higher 14% that went into effect on January 1st. Then you'll see about $1.2 million that are transfers in related to our internal service funds. So these funds are related to things like our workers' comp insurance, general liability insurance. These items are for supporting other departments, our staff. Kind of, you can think of that as contributing to our overhead costs. So you'll see that same amount listed in our transfers in and our transfers out as expenditures. They do cancel each other out. Moving on to our expenditures, we have a net total of .4 million. This includes about $1.1 million in operating expense adjustments. About half of that is related to temporary and overtime help that we'll cover a little bit more in our staffing section later on. And then the rest are related to other adjustments throughout the city departments. Then, as I mentioned, we have the Internal Service Fund transfer out. We have about .4 million in capital improvement plan adjustments for a few projects. And then finally, we have actually a reduction in our medical insurance premium. And then finally, we have actually a reduction in our medical insurance premiums. This is related to an overstatement that was included in the budget. And so this represents $2.28 million being released back into the various funds. So this altogether results in a positive net change of $3.474 million. Here, it's a little easier to see how each fund is impacted. So we have the majority of these are falling within the general fund. We have a few special revenue funds that are related to our capital improvement plan adjustments, and then the internal service funds, as I mentioned. And then those internal service fund allocations and the medical premium allocations are spread across various funds, just depending on how personnel are funded. So now we want to spend a little bit of time speaking about our general fund reserves. So why do we focus on our general fund? It is our largest and our most active fund. The majority of our city operations are funded through the general fund, so it really makes a big impact, the health of this fund, on the city's long-term sustainability. Maintaining a high level of general fund reserves helps the city maintain its AAA bond rating, which helps the city access better interest rates and financing options. It provides flexibility for economic downturns and helps the city respond to future emergencies. And this is, this is really reflected in the city council reserve policy that it has established to help save for those contingencies and be able to respond quickly when it matters. So you have, you see the emergency contingency reserve and the economic stabilization reserve are increased slightly. This is because these funds are a percentage of the general fund. And so when we make amendments to the general fund, that goes up, then those percentages that need to be put into the reserves also goes up to be able to meet the minimum reserve levels. Here we have listed the strategic pension reserve. There's no change being proposed in the mid-year budget, and this is just to reflect the current balance of $1.1 million in that specific reserve bucket. And then when you take into account all of the different reserve policies and making sure that those minimums are met, we're left with the unassigned fund balance, a slight increase from 7.1 to 7.3 million after those proposed budget amendments. So the unassigned fund balance are really what is remaining that has not yet been set aside for specific purpose. These funds can be used for one-time purposes going forward, noting that, again, those benefits of keeping the reserve levels strong. Wanted to spend a little bit of time on talking about our grant funding. So staff work diligently to identify and apply for grant awards throughout all of our departments with a strong emphasis over in public works. And so overall, we have a total grant award for the city of 85.7 million. About 50 million of that is that FEMA project that you've heard quite a lot about with the Safer Bay and the BRIC grant. And those are outlined in more details for the city council in attachment G. And so staff are monitoring changes at the federal government level that could result in a loss or reduction of any of these grant awards. We do not believe that any of our grants are currently in jeopardy. Staff have spoken with the California Office of Emergency Services and have been assured that that particular grant for Safer Bay is coming through, and so we are in communications with our funding agencies. Should there be any changes, staff would bring an update to the city council to be able to get direction on if we need to pause that activity while we look for other grant funds, or if the city council wants to use other revenue sources or whatever that path forward might be for that specific project. Also wanted to spend a moment on staffing. As a service organization, we have quite a bit of our funds could do go to personnel who provide those services to our community. We do have a citywide vacancy rate approximately of 15%. And so this is significant. This, these kind of reduced staffing levels can lead to delays in project implementation, just providing those day-to-day services that help keep the, the community running. And it also may slow our progress on meeting city council priorities. And so of note, about .56 million in the proposed budget amendments are due to overtime and temporary help, really working to backfill some of those vacancies and still move forward on the items that need to, to get done. To help address these staffing challenges, staff are working to develop recruitment and retention strategies. One of these that we're looking at developing is a recruitment incentive program that would help to recruit qualified candidates in classifications where we're really facing persistent challenges. So this might relate to the, an item you saw recently with the senior civil engineer. These are highly specialized positions that require certifications, and it's difficult to recruit. There might be a high turnover for certain positions. And so, and as well as public safety-related positions and other essential services. And so by providing this recruitment incentive program, this would actually be cost neutral. We would look to use salary savings to fund this program. And so we'll be bringing back more details to the city council when this is fully fleshed out, but we wanted to let you know that we're working on this to try to address some of our recruitment and retention challenges. We're also looking at how the city competes in our job market. And so one of the ways to look at this is by conducting a compensation study, both targeted studies that look at specific classifications where we're having a high, high level of difficulty recruiting, as well as looking holistically at all of our city's classifications and seeing where are we, are we in alignment, or do we need to make some changes? So we are planning to conduct a comprehensive study and put that into the budget for fiscal year 25, 26. And so tonight, we're looking for city council direction to adopt the resolution to approve these additional appropriations and amendments for the current fiscal year operating and capital budget. And just to highlight what's ahead for our fiscal year 25, 26 budget, that we have a city council priority setting workshop scheduled for March 22nd. Then we'll be bringing our budget principals to the city council for direction approximately April 15th, looking to hold our budget workshop for the public on May 29th. And then we have our annual public hearing in the first meeting, June 10th, and the budget adjournment for June 24th. And so that does conclude my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mello. Let's open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item L2, consider and adopt a resolution to amend fiscal year 2024, 25 budget. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine. Thank you, I have one hand, so this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item L2. Okay, so our first speaker will be Pam Jones.
Good evening, Pam Jones, resident of the Bellhaven neighborhood in Menlo Park. And it's refreshing to see how the finances are going for the city of Menlo Park, and I look forward to seeing some of the things that we've asked for in the environmental justice and safety elements as a part of using the funds, the funds that we have now found. Thank you.
Okay, and I am seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Right, thank you, City Clerk Karen. I'll bring it back to the dais for any questions or discussion. None, and it's, so then, this is an action item, right? So is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? Councilmember Wise?
Yes, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I will second.
Yeah. City Clerk Karen, we have a first and a second.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So we have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Wise and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to adopt a resolution approving additional appropriations and amendments to fiscal year 2024, 25, adopted operating and capital budget. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thanks. With that, we'll move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in sta, city, to the city council and staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any comments, public comments for the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So if any member of the public would like to provide comment on our informational items, M1, city council agenda topics, M2, the police department's fourth quarter update, M3, update on the capital improvement plan, M4, update on the city council fiscal year 2024, 25 work plan, M5, a home upgrade services progress report, or M6, homelessness services in Menlo Park. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card and bring that over to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature. If you're calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine now. Okay. So it looks like I have a total of three speakers. I will start with Catherine Dumont, speaking on items M2, and then M6.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. On the M2, I might, I just was looking at the, the RIPA data, and I just jumped out at me that the Hispanic Latino stops are at 42% or close to that, which just seems particularly high, given our population. That's just a comment on that. And then M6, also just was skimming through the report, really happy to see that there is engagement on the homelessness services. It's a lot of information I wasn't aware of before. And what I'm not seeing is kind of like when the program started, and there's a, there's a discussion of regional partnership through 2027. And I'm just interested to see more information kind of on the what the plans are to, to use these funds and collaboration in order to, to actually house people and you know, how that's going to be tracked in terms of success rate. And so I'm, I'm, and I'm, I'm just reacting to what I'm seeing here, which is yay, good, we're doing this, and there's money. And how long have we been doing it? What results have we gotten so far? And you know, how often these reports will come out? The other thing I was looking at was, you know, the list of housing element goals, policies, and programs. And, you know, there's a mention of anti-displacement, there's a mention of of, of zoning amendments for special needs, there's mention of renter protection. So I'm interested to see what programs are actually going to be funded, or, or programs, policies will move forward in our housing element that will take advantage of these resources and the collaborations with the, with the, with the county. So, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Adina Levin, followed by Jenny Michelle. And Adina, if you could let us know which item or items you're speaking on?
Yes, I'm speaking on M6 and building on what Catherine Dumont was just saying. I'm, I was glad to hear that city council on the previous item wanted to agendize an item with the social service organizations such as Life Moves and others to come and present on the, you know, social service and options for people that have been living in vehicles. I would urge city council to also, in that context, you know, same or closely related, to look at safe parking options. I heard Councilmember Schmidt state that it would take a couple of years to set up safe parking. But, you know, is that like, what, what do we know about that? Is that something that, you know, really would take that long? Are there things in the safe parking category that we could do sooner? As well as addressing and taking on some of the issues that people who are currently living in vehicles raised up as issues? For example, when the police officer said, you know, if someone is, you know, they find housing, but there isn't anything to be done with their vehicle, if someone does not have a lot of assets saying, well, you just need to, you know, get rid, you know, like, like dump with no value, something that might be your highest valued possession, you can really see why somebody would not want to do that. Is there some kind of a solution for the for the RVs? Like, what are the other actual issues that people have that are barriers to people moving into other housing solutions? Would love to see the agenda item really address some of the issues that are, you know, barriers or opportunities, sorry, that's a train, so that we can be providing more and better and more secure housing solutions for people who are currently our neighbors. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle. And Jenny, can you confirm the agenda item you'll be speaking on?
Yes, hi, I am speaking on, I think it was M2 for the police
Yes.
update. Although I am supportive of M6, yay. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, honorable staff, I'm Jen Michelle, native, born and raised in D3. Personal comments. Although I understand that this report is from quarter 2024, item seven could have listed the community outreach in the form of the recruitment for the community academy. item seven could have listed the community outreach in the form of the recruitment for the community academy. I just completed the police community academy. I could not recommend it more. Wherever you are in your support or disgust for the police, I promise by the end of the six weeks, you'll become a huge super fan of the department on all the various sub-departments. Personally, I find myself incredibly grateful for the work each person in the department and sub-departments do towards furthering the goals and mission under Chief Norris. I am humbled by their professionalism in the face of stressful and often traumatic incidents each day. I am also appreciative of the investment that we've made as a city in our like reconstruction technology, our bikes, the, both motor and non-motoredized, and flock cameras. Sound investments lead to money saved over the long run, and that is being accomplished with beyond reasonable doubt evidence. One thing we can all do to help the police is give them some grace. When calling in and asking for services, being mindful that the majority of the teams responding are short-staffed and could be dealing with some really serious priorities. Just like with the fire department, our police are leaders in their field, and I tip my hat to them. Thank you for all your work, Chief Norris and the other employees hired under that department. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Great, thanks. Bringing it to the dais, any comments about the informational items? Councilmember Schmidt?
I just want to echo what councilmember Nash and others have said. At some point, it would be great to dive into M6 a little deeper as we have time to understand that incorporated some of our priorities. So just wanted to echo that. Thanks.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the city managers' report. It's regarding M6, just really quickly going back to that. Is there some optionality to discuss that during the priority planning workshop at all?
It's a great segue. That's one of my manager reports. So, let's see, so I would say to the, to the level of detail that I'm hearing tonight, I would say no, because there's already a pretty hefty agenda as it relates to the fact that housing is one of the previously identified priorities and may be reconfirmed as a priority and kind of touch, touch on it. I'd say yes, but to some of the level of interest and time that would be needed for it, I would say unlikely. Yeah, if that, that, okay. Yeah, but if, if it, it might be an opportunity to, to touch on it a little bit to help, help bring the, the level of awareness up and help connect some of the, the dots of, of existing services that are available and how those are delivered, because a lot of them are delivered at the county level. The city is then a key partner with that, but the city is not in lead. And so that's kind of the main, main takeaway. Great. So anything else on the info items? So then on the, on the city manager reports, I was going to advertise, do an advertisement for the council priority setting session on March 22nd, and there is the open opportunity for the public to, to weigh in. We've had a tremendous response thus far this year. And so the deadline for people to make their final submittals is March 7th, a, a week from, a week from Friday. So, and information's available on the city's website. It's an open forum, pretty easy for people to submit their thoughts. So thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear you're getting a lot of feedback. I, I've been doing my part to advertise it, so I guess the meeting will, will learn the, the nature and tenor of that, that feedback. Okay, moving on to councilmember reports. I will kick it off by reporting that councilmember Taylor was appointed to the South Bay seat of the San Francisco Bay Conservation and Development Commission. The appointment was made by the city select committee, and I was honored to represent Menlo Park and vote to appoint councilmember Taylor to that position. So that's the only report I have. Are there any other reports I know which will be of lesser quality and importance? Yeah, Vice Mayor Taylor.
So I actually, we had a CCG Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee meeting, and there were three presentations there from San Mateo County Energy Watch and the RI-CAPS, which is Regionally Integrated Climate Action Plan Support. Also from VASC, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, and an overview of grant and funding requests related to RMCP. And I will try very hard to get the presentations to city clerk Erin for the next packet. Thank you. Oh, and I wanted to mention that next week, we'd have a special council meeting about, that we'll discuss, I don't know if someone else wants to. That we'll discuss what, how we chose the current sites for housing, particularly affordable housing. And it'll be at 6 o'clock right here. Thanks.
Councilmember Wise?
Oh, thank you. I do actually more of a question, something city manager Murphy and I have discussed is at the request of some folks on the EQC, the possibility of looking at switching the currently turf, well, currently under construction, but turf in Kelly Park to natural grass. So I just wanted to ask that at a council meeting to see if it would be at all possible to get more information about sort of like the pros and cons about from everything from budgeting, maintenance, field time use, all of that around switching to natural grass at Kelly Park.
Let's see, Mayor, I would, I would say that's kind of related to the item M3, the CIP update. Within that update, there was the two different projects identified. One is the specifically the Kelly Park field replace, field and track replacement. And that's where the project's listed as currently effectively designed, 90% design, design is effectively complete, but on hold, because as the council may remember, there's additional work that needs to be done for the Bellhaven Community Campus microgrid project, the kind of clean energy that involves the carports going over the parking lot of Kelly, Kelly parking lot. So because there's been a delay in being able to implement the Kelly field replacement based off the, the delays related to the, to the microgrid, project's effectively on hold. The, if there is a, a, a interest in the council on learning more about some of the options, that'd be helpful to hear this evening. It most likely wouldn't come back to the council until what's identified in the staff report is a study session on, on the CIP in the May. So it'd be as part of that timeframe that we could report back on information. And that'd be good to know at that point in time if there is a desire for a change. And we'd have to know that, that, that sort of change then. Otherwise, we would need to kind of continue with what's been planned for the past, past few years for the replacement there. So I, I, what would be helpful this evening is if there's a desire to get that additional information about the optionality, or if there's a desire to stay the course.
I, I think I would ask for like, you know, this to go through the formal councilmember initiated process. And so that you would follow the form that city clerk Erin has, has put together. I always lose it, but she will send it to you if you don't have the link. And, and then, yeah, then that we would, whenever that can be agendized next as a councilmember report, we'll, we'll, we'll take it up and see if there is at least one. Then does it have to be a majority vote to like give direction? Yeah, let's see. So, so then, so then we'll, we'll see from there. Sure. Cool. Okay. So that, that was no more councilmember reports. Okay, well, with that, we will adjourn.